We're live.
And if those of you who are not yet presenting, I guess that's the other.
Can I go ahead and?
Yeah, go ahead, Liz. Thank you.
Welcome. Bienvenidos a siguiente minisakasitara de pino en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will dedicate 30 minutes to public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be a second and final opportunity to participate in public comment for those who do not get to during the first call. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand icon. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Once again, if you wait to raise your hand until public comment starts, you may not get to speak during the first call. I may need to wait until the end of the meeting. When called upon, you'll be promoted to panelists. This means that you will appear on screen. So if you do not wish to be on camera, please be sure to disable the camera on your end. The board president will usually call students first. So if there are students who wish to participate in public comment, please write student at the end of your name. The board president will also determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis has the discretion to allow extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown holding a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but try not to go beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionar un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión después de unos procedimientos preliminares. Un periodo de media hora, 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Al final de la junta, usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10. Habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, por favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla. Escoja levantar la mano o raise your hand. Para comentar por teléfono, por favor de levantar la mano presionando estrella nueve. Y por favor de hacerlo ya, ya que si te espera hasta el inicio del periodo, no, tal vez no podrá hacerlo durante la primera llamada y tendrá que esperarse hasta el final de la reunión. El presidente otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Al ser llamado o llamada, será promocionado a panelista. Esto quiere decir que aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le falten 15 segundos, la vicepresidenta le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si todavía está hablando, por favor de terminar su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charis, and welcome everybody to the September 22nd meeting of the Birthday School Board. There's a, I like telling people how many are here because we can see, but you all don't know. But there's about 70 people in attendance tonight, and we have a lot of people have raised their hands. So we're going to be limiting public comment tonight to one minute each. And I want to say that now so that everyone has an opportunity to calibrate their comments to one minute. There'll be another public comment period at the end of the meeting. But in order to get as many people who have raised their hands able to speak, we're going to ask everybody to limit their comments to one minute, and we appreciate that so that we can get to as many people as possible. Ms. Charis, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Angela Muscati is one. Presente. Director Laura Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Julie Sinek.
Here.
Vice President Joseph Brown.
She's not here. She will be here in a minute. Ms. Charis, your mic is not really working. But I assume you called my name, so I'll say here. Yes, thank you. Vice President Brown will be here. Hold on one second. All right. Now we need to approve the agenda for the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Second, my director Sinek. Ms. Charis, can you call the roll?
Director Muscati is one. Yes. Director Vassilov.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinek.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
She's not here yet. That's okay.
Okay, President Albert.
Yes. Okay. Let's see. I've got to wait for Vice President Brown to get here, so I will stall for one minute. Oh, her internet went out. She'll be here in a minute. And just say again that we're going to have to limit public comment to one minute each. So if you could adjust your comments accordingly, that would be great. And we can always, okay, what we'll do is we'll start public comment. We'll do the report on closed session after public comment. Although Vice President Brown is also a timekeeper. So maybe we should just give her, well, what we can do is say happy birthday to Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio. And happy birthday to Lisa Stupin, whose birthday is tomorrow.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And Kathy Fleming, or did I make that up?
No, Director Rustio, who's in the attendees, it's her birthday tomorrow. So three Ed Services birthdays in a row.
All right. And as a birthday present to Director Steel Brown, can you promote her to panelist list when you get to? It's what she has always wanted since she was a little girl. All right. Anything else?
Director Brown is here.
Oh, she's here. Okay. Vice President Brown, thank you. I want to turn it over to you to report from closed session if you're ready. We'll give her a minute. Do you want to do it after? Do you want to do it after public comment, Vice President Brown?
I'm ready now, actually.
Okay.
Thank you. This is a report from closed session. All of school board directors were present. Item 3.1.1, it was moved by Director Babbitt, seconded by Director Sinek, and the motion passed five to zero. Item 3.1.2 was moved by Director Babbitt, seconded by Vice President Brown, and the motion passed five to zero. For item 3.2, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.4.1, sorry, for item 3.3, the board heard a direction, heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.4.1, the board heard an update and provided direction.
Great. Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. Now we will move to public comment. So if you'd like to make public comment, now is the time to raise your hand. And if you raise your hand once we start, you'll be able to give public comment at the end of the meeting. But now is the time to raise your hand if you'd like your public comment. I'll give people a minute to raise their hand and then we'll shut it off. Okay? And again, one minute each. Okay? The last, you all in the audience can't see the list, but the last person will be Alexander Heiser. And we will start with Wade, and everybody has one minute. Vice President Brown will have the timer going. And again, in order to get to everybody, we really ask you to stop at one minute. That way, we can hear from more members of the community. Wade, you're up, and then Liza Letzger will follow.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I had three minutes prepared, so I'm going to try my best to, I've just cut a bunch of stuff out. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak to this important issue, and I'm really grateful for all the hard work, care, and dedication you guys show to our kids, and that includes teacher staff and administration. Recent CDC data shows COVID survival rate in children around 99.9973%. This should provide some comfort for all of us, yet other, among other concerns, we're hearing about the risk of heart inflammation, myocarditis, and teen boys from the vaccines. And new data continues to emerge that questions if the vaccines are more harmful to our kids than the virus. While it can't be my job as a parent to prove that these vaccines are harmful, now or in the long term, it is the job of anyone mandating, promoting, or condoning them to assure us they are safe and not more harmful for our kids than the virus itself. I do not believe anyone can be certain of that at this time. As with doctors, I believe educators and parents must first do no harm. Hope is not a strategy. Science is not based on wishful thinking or based on the success of other vaccines we have had in the past for other things. We need caution and more data. Lastly, it is well known that the vaccine makers are not liable for these vaccines. The U S D should not assume liability for mandating or urging these unproven vaccines. I commend the school board for offering it to avoid an untenable approach to the health and safety of our children. So thank you. I look forward to talking more about the testing.
Thank you so much. Again, I know it's a short amount of time, but if everybody can keep to one minute, we'll be able to get to everybody else. Liza Letzger, followed by Katie Miller.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. So I am calling tonight as a parent and Safe Route to School Parent Champion at Sylvia Mendez and Longfellow to really urge you as you're considering the middle school assignment plan to really think very closely about transportation issues. Specifically, I think it would be really important to find, form a transportation working group to think about these issues that had some funding and district staff behind it. We really don't understand how our students in any grades get to and from school. We have no comprehensive way of tracking that other than yellow school bus riders. We really need to conduct some transportation tallies, at least with our middle schoolers, to understand how they're getting to and from school before we dive into this. And I think actually it would be a great place to launch an overall plan to understand school transportation in Berkeley better, given how congested things are, how much of a contributor greenhouse gases are, transportation is to our greenhouse gas emissions. It's 60% in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Katie Miller, followed by Lynn Silver.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you, board members. I am the parent of a Berkeley High basketball player, and I come here tonight seeking your assistance. Our basketball teams are not being allowed to come together for conditioning and practice. We've been told they can't access the gym until the regular season begins. And I put that in air quotes because the notion of being in season is really anachronistic for high school sports. Teams of all kinds practice throughout the year, and every other Bay Area high school basketball team, of which I'm aware, private and public, is already practicing together. We are disadvantaging our kids in the season, but also inequitably as they look for college scholarships in the future. And one of Berkeley's own coaches resigned in frustration this week, and we're so worried others were follow suit. The school has told us there's not enough testing capacity, but the California Department of Public Health is providing free tests to schools, and they say there's plenty of supply. And I just want to note, there have been so many complicated issues to solve during the pandemic, but this is not one of them. I think it's a really simple fix, and I thank you for your support with this. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Lynn Silver, followed by Yvette Falarka. Go ahead, Ms. Silver. I think you're muted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Dr. Lynn Silver, pediatrician and public health practitioner and former B U S D mom. I also direct Safely Opening Schools Project in California. The data is clear. Our only viable strategy to end the pandemic is vaccination. Our vaccines are safe and effective, and the data shows they are much safer than getting COVID even in adolescence. This is not the time for timidity. It is the time to act decisively to save lives and educate our children by requiring vaccination. Our school districts are all struggling with COVID with hundreds of kids sent home or in modified quarantine. To save lives and educate effectively, we need to interrupt transmission. Not 10 years from now or next year or when politicians get around to it, but now. I have consulted legal experts, and our understanding is that the districts do have the authority to require vaccination. Requiring vaccination is not racism. Racism is allowing COVID's unjust burden of death and disease and educational impact to continue to fall on our communities of color because we were too scared to take action or worried about a lawsuit.
Thanks, Ms. Silver.
Vaccination is an act of human solidarity with those who remain vulnerable, such as your immunocompromised children, staff, and family. You already respond to many species lawsuits. Take the risk of going to court for one that really matters, and please support requiring vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Falarka, followed by Angela.
Hi, Yvette Falarka. School boards in California are finally beginning to acknowledge what's been clear for months. There's no other path toward protecting students, teachers, and school staff, plus our families, against COVID-19 other than mandatory vaccination for all students and adults in our schools. LA U S D already has mandated COVID vaccinations for all eligible students and staff, and the San Jose Mercury News editorial board is also calling for this same policy in the Bay Area. It's past time for this action, and B U S D needs to do the same thing. COVID is more dangerous than vaccines. Every day that students attend in-person school without vaccines being mandatory, students and their families face mortal danger from the virus as well as the danger of permanent organ damage, M I S C and long COVID. The emergence of the Delta variant has made this danger even worse. We're now seeing a spike in case rates among the very young, which is precise. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay. Angela, followed by Pat Riley. And I appreciate everybody sticking to the one minute. Vice President Brown now has a times up background. What time is that?
Good evening. Oops. I don't think you can see me. Oh, well, I'm back today. Sorry. Dr. Angela Gallegos Castillo, thank you, superintendent, board members, all the administrative staff. I wanted to check in real quickly today. I'm happy to see that the Pique in Latino literacy is on the consent calendar. This is really critical. We need to support those students that lost learning time and were disconnected from school during COVID. I know we have a new Brea director, and they will be working on the dashboard. And so I want to invite us to think about offering that dashboard in Spanish in addition to English for our Spanish-speaking parents. I am hoping that Puente, as a new Latinx intervention program, that we have multiple cohorts for the first year. That would be really great, trying to expand the program to make sure all students, more students benefit from that. And I needed, I wanted some clarification on Pique to find out if the engagement is both in Spanish and English with the Pique. If I remember, and thank you for all your work. Look forward to working with you all through Latinos Unidos.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next, we have Pat Riley, followed by Grace Morizawa. You're muted, Ms. Riley.
I'm muted. Okay, great. So I'm calling on behalf of the basketball students, after-school students, and the musicians at Berkeley High and Berkeley at our middle schools. We've had our kids locked out of school for a year and a half, and they suffered extraordinarily for that. And what I'm asking today is that each of the board members take a moment to imagine a life where we're going to live with COVID from, basically for the future. It's an endemic condition. So when you think about your board responsibility to think, how is it that we can restore our adolescents and our teens' lives to the fullest extent possible? And from my perspective, that includes figuring out how kids can play basketball in their own gym, how kids who are responsible, who need to go to after-school programs can go to after-school programs and play with other kids. How can we, how can you as board members help us as parents restore our kids' sense of wellness, sense of joy, sense of learning outside of an academic environment? That includes being pretty aggressive with other departments of public health and others to find a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Grace Morizawa, followed by Mark Joseph Ramia. Again, I'm really grateful to you all for keeping your comments to a minute because otherwise we're not going to be able to get to everybody. Go ahead, Mark, followed by Judith Sahid.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Grace. Yeah, you go ahead.
Go ahead. Hi, everybody. My name is Grace Morizawa, and I am on the Peace and Justice Commission appointed by the school board. There's currently a proposal to drop commission members appointed by the board, and I'm here today to ask for your support to maintain the appointments by the school board to the Peace and Justice Commission. Many of your commission appointments are usually people of color or young people. I myself am a lifelong educator. We school board appointees provide a needed perspective on the commission and to city government with a lived experience to issues such as equity, bullying, and racial disparity in the schools. The commission serves as a place where youth have equal voice and equal votes. It gives them a doorway to voice their concerns with the hope of support from the community. The problems of equity and access are both school and community concerns and need multiple points of entry to promote actions and policies that can make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mark Joseph Ramia, followed by Judith Sahid. Mr. Ramia. Mr. Ramia, are you there?
Oh, it told me that I was on. Sorry. Mark Ramia, Berkeley High School Instructional Assistant Paraprofessional. PC member Heidi Goldstein has stated that they anticipated classifieds having to take on extra duties. So monetary compensation has been set aside to remedy the situation. Instead, classifieds are being threatened with their jobs, and the level of expectation has been raised without compensations. Teachers have prep time. We don't have time to confer with administration and teachers. During the last summer, I was sent emails to participate in off-duty unpaid training. During the school year, the district expects IAs to do unpaid additional off-duty email work. IAs are encouraged to use their own mobile phone equipment for which the district does not pay. An instructional assistant is 10-month employee working 0.8 FTE, not getting full pay for months. For the, of the 10 months, most IPs move from classroom to classroom throughout the day. They do not have lockers, an office, or a dedicated desk. And I've now been given 15 minutes a day for checking emails, so I will not know what's going on where teachers and administration have access throughout the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ramia. Judith Sahid, followed by Jude Rockefeller.
Hi, sorry for that. I just want to echo what Katie Miller said about supporting our basketballers. And as a mom of a son who lives for basketball and living through the difficult time of COVID and having to drive him around to outdoor courts and hope that the nets weren't taken down during that period and all of everything that we went through, and we have such a dedicated head coach and Coach Hudson and an amazing group of students and parents, and it just seems like Katie said, it's a really easy fix. And I'm just here to support that, and thank you for everything you do for our kids.
Thanks so much. Jude Rockefeller, followed by Zaira Rodriguez.
Hi, I'm Jude Rockefeller. I'm a senior at Berkeley High, and I'm a former and hopefully future basketball player. And I just wanted to talk about, like, giving us access to the gyms as, because we don't have access to them at off. It can, like, hurt our future education by denying us scholarships where, when we get to play, we are given those opportunities. Not getting in the gym, we can't, like, play to help ourselves get those opportunities as well as it makes us have to play in less regulated and more dangerous gyms because we end up playing in gyms that don't require testing. Whereas if you guys, if we were allowed to play at Berkeley High, it could be tested and safer. Also, not being able to play can damage people's mental health because it's like a thing we do to, like, keep ourselves happy and for fun, and it can be really harming to our mental health. Thank you.
Thanks so much for being here, Jude. Zaira Rodriguez.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm here to speak on, in terms of the council trying to strip the B U S D seats in the Peace and Justice Commission. I'm here because a B U S D student director appointed me in 2016, which was my junior year going into high school. I've been in the commission since. It's been a great experience as a young Mexican-American to be a part of the commission. I was lucky to be exposed of the idea of joining the commission by a Berkeley High classmate. I think keeping the B U S D appointees allows diversity. Sorry, my notes went somewhere. Diversity, different opinions, views, and goals, especially from young adults and high schoolers. I think students are a part of a Berkeley community, so stripping away that opportunity is stripping opportunity from students, which, again, are part of the Berkeley community. I think it's important because personally, the commission has led me to gain skills, like being on time, showing up to meetings, engaging in group conversations, making decisions for the city, and in general, great experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I remember when you were appointed to the Peace and Justice Commission, so thank you for serving on it for all these years. Next, let's see, I lost track. Sarah Eminoff, I think, is next. Followed by Janet Stromberg.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. So I'm actually employee of Berkeley Unified School District. And I want to point out that per California law, California schools and school districts cannot require the COVID vaccine because the legislature hasn't passed a law that's required for schools and/or the California Department of Public Health has put out regulations. Also, I'm concerned about all the students who were vaccinated at Berkeley High who got COVID. I think all were vaccinated except one student. And the data shows in the CDC that the vaccine has low efficacy against the transmission of Delta. And the variant that the vaccines were not designed for and increases transmission. In fact, it's 26% higher in the vaccinated according to the Barnstable study. I also want to echo the other person who mentioned myocarditis. Vaccination is racism. It's not an act of human solidarity. The risks outweigh the benefits. And there's no long-term data, and we should not put our kids who are low risk for COVID. And this is not a binary solution. Am I all done?
You're out of time, but thank you so much. Thank you. Janet Stromberg, followed by John Becker. Ms. Stromberg? Ms. Stromberg, are you there? There you are.
There. Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm chair of the Berkeley Climate, the Berkeley Energy Commission, and I'm interested in looking at transportation emission reductions. And I would like to urge the school board to start a transportation working group for your middle school assignments, changes, and to fund a transportation plan. and to fund a transportation plan as part of the reassignment and to conduct a middle school transportation survey. 60% of climate emissions out of Berkeley come from driving, and the city really does not have a grip on this. And I think the schools could play a big part in starting to reduce those trips. I think from this county information, they estimate 50% of Berkeley students come to school in a car. And I think that's something needs to change. So that's what I have to say, and I hope you do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John Becker, followed by George Lippman. Mr. Becker. We are former BFT Vice President, John Becker.
Yes, yes. Good to be back with you all, even if virtually. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak as both a Berkeley High teacher and as a parent of two children who are too young to be vaccinated in strong support of the board instituting a vaccine requirement for all students and staff who are eligible in Berkeley Unified School District. I think this is a common sense policy. It just feels like beyond like a clear win and like obvious. I'm not going to speak about the efficacy or like the vaccine and how well it works because I am not a public health official. I think it's worth noting that the only actual public health official at the board meeting spoke very clearly and eloquently about that. Today, I talked to my 74-year-old father about getting his polio vaccine in school. He still remembers that. I just, the only other thing I would say is that I think it's really important the board makes this very accessible to students and staff, vaccine clinics at school sites during the school day, that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate it. Next, we have George Lippman, followed by Mike Hudson. Mr. Lippman, yeah, there you go.
Okay, hi. Yes, George Lippman, I'm the vice chair of the Berkeley Peace and Justice Commission. I'm calling to support the three commissioners who are appointed by the board. The commission is one of only two commissions in the city that is appointed both by the city council and the school board. It's a very special group, and we hope to work with you in perpetuity. I hope that you will write a letter, obviously not this meeting, but put it on your next agenda. Write a letter to the city council and also speak up at the two-by-two committee as Karen Hemphill and the majority of the board did eight years ago when the same proposal came through. We have a lot to offer each other. And we need to hear the voices of the students and the members of the BSU, BUSD community on matters of peace and social justice in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lippman. Mike Hudson, followed by Tim O'Brien.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. But I'm the basketball, head basketball coach at Berkeley High. And I'm just speaking on behalf of the basketball program at Berkeley. As of now, all offseason sports at Berkeley are prohibited due to the fact that, you know, and speaking with school officials, the school does not have adequate testing supplies for out-of-school, out-of-season athletes. I'm just requesting that a Berkeley school be allotted enough tests to supply out-of-season athletes to prepare them for the upcoming season that students are very excited about. We just need the school board to work with the Berkeley Department of Health to ensure that our athletes get the safe and healthy playing time that they deserve, which also point out the fact that our kids have suffered socially, emotional, and academic setbacks as a result of the longest ever shutdown in school history. It's just been a tough two years on our athletes and we just, I believe we owe it to them to provide them with the resources that's preventing them from playing in their own gym. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all your work with our students.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I think it was Tim O'Brien. Yeah, Tim O'Brien, followed by Tom Fairchild.
Am I on?
You're on.
Tim O'Brien. I have a son in the basketball program. I'm calling about basketball. I'm also calling about vaccination. I think it's a great idea. I think BUSD really championed science in 2020, 2021, and that's why everything got closed down. Now the science is clear and it's time to continue to embrace science. Make the tough decisions. The time to act is now. The base, the basketball kids, I hear that we have less tests because we have such a high vaccination rate. I mean, that's, that's just inane. So let's get the boys and girls back in the gyms. Let's get these programs going. So, so the underprivileged kids can get their scholarships if it's necessary. They can compete against these other high schools. And we can join the rest of the Bay Area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brian. Tom Fairchild, followed by Elijah Williams. Go ahead, Mr. Fairchild. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Tom.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Video. Hey, there I am. Sorry, I'm not that great at this stuff. Anyway, hello, school board. My name is Tom Fairchild. Thank you for this opportunity. I've lived in Berkeley most of my 61 years. I'm a 30-plus-year veteran teacher and a parent of two VHS grads, as well as a current 11th grader. I have more than one minute of talking here, so I've typed it all out and I'll share it with the school board for the public record. So when I get to a minute, I'll just shut up. Most of my career has been at the kindergarten level. The last few years, I've left the classroom and have been an elementary PE release time teacher. I have a master's of education from UC Berkeley's Principal Leadership Institute, which prides itself on its equity focus. My master's thesis examined the efficacy of my own action research and our staff's collaborative action research for equity. It's Glenn Singleton's renowned care program that we adopted in the 2000s. Our care program is recognized by the Berkeley School Fund. Two of our leaders achieved district awards for guiding our work that measurably closed the achievement gap between African-American Latino students and their white and Asian counterparts.
Mr. Fairchild, first line. Go ahead.
I mention this because I've always had a lens for equity, having been in USD's first class of integration as a student in the 60s. Also, from 9 to 18, I was usually the only white kid on black African-American teams. Most of the families at that time in West Berkeley were African-American. The opposite is true now.
Maybe one more sentence, Mr. Fairchild, then you're welcome to email us.
Yeah, I'll email it to you. I'm just saying, basically, number one, I'm concerned that a COVID vaccine mandate would disproportionately affect African-American Latino students and staff. And number two, I teach PE at Washington and Cragmont. I'm not vaccinated. I got COVID a little over three months ago and have been positively tested for antibodies.
Okay.
And I was on quarantine for 10 days. And I, I'll explain in my.
Okay, I gotta cut you off.
No, I know. It's a little frustrating.
I know. I'm sorry.
Let me just finish one last sentence. That quarantine is adversely affecting 240 students. If I'm quarantined again, the likelihood of one of those students getting a positive test is possible, along with the staff, because we don't have subs. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. And anybody, I should say, anybody is welcome to email the board at boardof@berkeley.net, and it will go to all of us. So if you don't, if you don't get to finish your comments and want to email us, you're welcome to. And the superintendent gets those emails as well. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more speakers on the list. And then if you didn't get a chance to speak at this public comment period, you'll be able to speak at the end of the meeting. We have Carter Staden next, followed by Sarah Bowles.
Hi, my name is Carter Staden. I'm a senior at Berkeley High School and a member of the basketball team. As Coach Hudson said, we'd like your help requesting the Berkeley Health Department provide us with COVID tests so that our student athletes can practice safely in our school gym. Almost all other schools in the Bay Area are letting athletes practice, which puts our own team at a major disadvantage and affects our school's athletic programs, like ability to basically compete at a high level. Not being allowed access to our gym is, it's not solving any problem. And all our athletes, like, play at local parks, which is much less safe than if we were allowed to play in our own gym. And we've already lost a year and a half of athletics due to COVID. And with things going back to normal and our school being at full capacity, we would just hate to lose any more time. And I think we deserve to be able to practice in our own gym. So, thank you.
Thanks for being here, Carter. Next is Sarah Bowles, followed by Maria. Go ahead, Ms. Bowles.
Hey, so I just want to state from the jump, I'm COVID vaccinated, as is my age-eligible kid. But a little recap, we're not currently seeing COVID transmission on campus. Kids in the target age group that you're looking at for mandatory vaccination have a higher vax rate than adults employed by the district. And the vaccine is not out of emergency use authorization for kids aged 12 to 15. Most importantly, higher levels of government employing actual medical professionals are not comfortable mandating vaccination due to some very concerning heart issues, which is why countries like the UK don't recommend it. So in making the decision to vaccinate my kid, I called my pediatrician, not a politician. So adults in the community have a responsibility to protect kids by getting vaccinated and not creating artificial barriers to education for vulnerable kids who are safe with masks. So I think coercing the few remaining parents into signing that waiver that we all signed is pretty significant overreach. And I don't want to make medical decisions for other people's kids, and I don't think you should either. And yeah, I'm pro-vax, but I think it's other people's decision, especially while it's emergency use.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Next, we have Maria, followed by Roxana. Go ahead, Maria.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'd just like to say, first of all, you know, I know most of you guys probably already have your minds made up about vaccine requirements. But you, the very fact that you're making this as a consideration is mind-boggling to me because a school board has no right to mandate medical procedures for students or staff. And so I'd just like to say that, you know, if you do end up making this decision, if you are one of the people who vote this into place, that you will be held accountable. You will be held accountable whether it's by the government, whether it's by personal lawsuits. One way or another, you will be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Roxana, followed by Dan Feinberg. Lisa Wilson and then Alexander Heiser will be our last speaker of this comment period. Roxana is next. Ms. Chires. Okay.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm here as a parent of a Berkeley High basketball player. And also, I'd like to echo the request of Coach Mike and other parents and the students to please support the additional testing to allow the gym to be open. Please consider how important physical condition is for this program and also for the emotional health of the students. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Dan Feinberg, followed by Lisa Wilson. Mr. Feinberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is actually Holly Scheider. My computer crashed, so I. I am joining you tonight. First of all, thank you so much for considering mandating vaccines. I know it's a very difficult topic, but I am calling you as both a public health professional and BUSD parent, Berkeley High School parent. I fully support mandating vaccines for staff, teachers, and age-eligible students. At least those who are 16 and up. I, you know, I just, vaccines are very simple. They work. They are safer than the disease. School districts already require vaccines for things like polio and measles. The way vaccines work, stopping the spread of disease, is when everyone gets them. And so you don't have the virus running around infecting people. Unfortunately, with COVID, we've got new variants that are breaking through. My son missed the entire third week of school because he got a bad cold, and we had to go through this whole thing of tech breaking out. So I encourage you, and I'm appalled that there are staff who are not vaccinated at this point.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Lisa Wilson, and then our last speaker of this comment period will be Alexander Heiser. Yeah. Go ahead. Ms. Wilson.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to add my support to a policy that requires in-person students to receive a COVID vaccine unless there are valid medical concerns, just like the vaccines that are mandated by California law. Some mandates allow for religious exemptions, and in light of increasing reports that people, including a group of 1,700 health professionals in San Diego, are seeking religious exemptions with the help of religious leaders. It's important to note that in the US, Christian Scientists and the Dutch Reformed Church are the only major religions that forbid vaccines. These vaccines do not contain pork products, in my opinion. Only medical exemptions should be concerned. I'm not sure where things stand with staff, but I think there should be a similar mandate with no option for testing instead of vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alexander Heiser.
Hi, I'm Alexander. I'm another one of the basketball players at Berkeley High. So I would just like to reiterate everything that's already been said about the subject, about the importance of letting us get back in our gym and our facilities. And one thing I would add is that throughout this whole time, when we have been able to get together, the whole team has been very compliant about things like mask wearing and such, and the coaches have been very on top of things. So I'm just saying, we would, I think we would definitely be able to comply with whatever guidelines we need to, if we were able to have access to the gym and to enough tests for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexander. Thank you for being here and for sticking around to the end of the public comment period, which we have now reached. Now we will turn to union comments, and I know we have a recorded message from the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. If there's any other union comment, now is the time to raise your hand. If you're here for regular public comment and didn't get a chance to speak, we'll have another comment period at the end of the meeting. Ms. Chires, can you play President Meyer's message? Liz, the sound.
Tonight, the board will begin a discussion regarding mandatory COVID vaccination for all eligible students over 12 years old, including adult school students. In a recent survey of BFT members, this proposal is overwhelmingly supported by our teaching staff. We believe that vaccinations, combined with testing and masking, will keep our COVID cases at a manageable level. We have seen the impact on our ability to keep students in school when cases are high. Our system just isn't built to manage a pandemic. Because of this, increasing our vaccination rates will greatly improve our school sites' ability to run modified quarantines and keep our students safe. In order to keep students in school as much as possible, this policy should be approved. The district has already agreed to run testing at every site and to prioritize unvaccinated populations. This board policy fits into what, as a district, we've already agreed to. It is important that the district work with the city to make vaccines available at our school sites and provide information in multiple languages, as well as live outreach to families, so they are aware of their options. The Berkeley Federation of Teachers also strongly supports a mandate requiring all eligible students that participate in athletics or attend indoor events to be vaccinated. This is in line with City of Berkeley policies. Our teachers support common sense public health guidance that will keep our case rates low and reduce the disruption to learning as much as possible. Some of our positive cases have occurred with athletes, so this targeted approach will have a direct impact on a team's ability to participate in a regular season. Although it is not being discussed today, the Berkeley Federation Although it is not being discussed today, the Berkeley Federation of Teachers also supports mandatory vaccines for our staff. Unvaccinated staff members already have to test once a week, but we support an even stronger stance. Based on our own data, over 95% of our teaching staff is vaccinated. But even one unvaccinated close contact can severely disrupt the functioning of a school. There's already a substitute teacher shortage, so being out for a minimum of 10 days as a close contact means that students miss out on their teacher for two weeks. They may not have a consistent substitute. Teachers may not get their contractual preps. Teachers will have to cover for each other. Students could be split up among other classes, and services for students may not occur. An unvaccinated adult also increases the risk to both our vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff members. Although we fully agree with mandatory testing, the right thing to do is to make sure that those working in public education have all three COVID mitigations in place: masking, testing, and by far the most effective one, vaccinations. Although personal choice is important, those choices can impact others that don't get to choose. As we study in my economics class, we refer to this concept as positive externalities. For each vaccine administered, it lowers the transmission rates on a third party, in this case, our community at large. Because the benefit to society is larger than the benefit to any one individual, it takes government intervention to reach the socially desirable level of vaccination rates. We see this government intervention playing out across the country, both in the private and public sectors. Just yesterday, the City of Berkeley enacted a mandatory vaccine policy, and BUSD should follow suit. As anxieties run high among the Berkeley community over keeping 9,000 students and over 1,000 staff members safe for the rest of the school year, a complete BUSD vaccination policy will provide the safest possible environment to learn and work. Thank you for your time.
All right. I think his introduction was cut off, but that was Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Now, I don't see any other union comments, so we'll move to committee comments. I believe the only committee, okay, I see Terry Pastico raised your hand. First, we're going to have from the Youth Commission, the Chair, I think the Chair, I think Sam's the Chair, Sam Kaplan-Pettis. So, Ms. Charis, can you promote Sam?
Hello, thank you so much. I'll be brief. I know you have a lot to do. I think that it's, we wrote a letter about a week ago in support of a vaccine mandate for all students and passed it unanimously. And I think that this is a really important step, and I support this resolution. I think, you know, when the data and the evidence is so clear that vaccines are going to keep students in our community safe, that that has to take precedent over uninformed personal wishes of people that aren't backed up by science. Like a previous speaker said, the only public health expert here today supported this policy. And also for the people who are still questioning it, I think it's also important to remember that your proposal or this proposal includes a testing option for students who are not in optional programming, like sports. And so we're not going to force every single student to get vaccinated. There is another option. That being said, in the Youth Commission letter, we recommended that all students be tested, not tested, all students be vaccinated. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your service on the Youth Commission and for the letter that the Commission sent to the board. We appreciate it. Ms. Charis, can you promote Terry Pastico? I assume Ms. Pastico is here on behalf of the Planning and Oversight Commission Committee, if I'm wrong. We can demote her. But Ms. Pastico, is that why you're here?
Yes, I am here on behalf of the PNO. Please don't demote me.
I won't demote you. You've got five minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Terry Pastica, and I'm here on behalf of the Planning and Oversight Committee. The PNO is an advisory body combined of representatives from every school in the district, and we make recommendations on BSEP and BARA spending, which are two special tax measures that are passed by Berkeley voters that supplement district funding over the baseline property tax assessment. A majority of BSEP funds support smaller class size, and BARA funds support teacher and staff recruitment and retention. So these measures collectively raise about 25% of the BUSD annual budget. So last year, the PNO decided that we were going to be proactive in keeping the school board informed of our work, which includes reviewing more than 10 budgets that total more than $32 million per year. So the PNO looks at the current year budget, next year budget, and we also look at how BSEP and BARA budgets work with district, other district funding, like the general fund in LCAP. So here are our highlights from our first meeting. So we heard the comments from our outgoing BSEP Director, and we had the pleasure of meeting the new Director of Local Resources and Partnerships, who reviewed that position, and we also met the new Associate Superintendent. And most significantly, we received a budget overview of BSEP and how we are currently in planned deficit spending. And we had a discussion that cuts in current spending levels will be required so that this measure will not run out of funds before the end, and we have adequate reserves to bridge to a new measure. We also reviewed a timeline with benchmarks and significant planning points between now and a new measure in 2024. So the items of concern that PNO members brought up had to do with if the multi-year budget projection included recent labor agreements, and we were told that's still being analyzed. We wanted to know if the new director's position was part of the Superintendent's Executive Committee, which was requested by the PNO. And the answer was no, but there's a close working relationship. And we also wanted to know how the new director will balance community interests against superintendent, against school district interests when at times there are tension between the two, given that this position is no longer independent, meaning the director reports to the Associate Superintendent. And we talked about how the new director views the position as a conduit between the community and the district. So additional feedback had to do really with a concern about how serious the budget cuts will need to be to keep BSEP healthy, a concern about equity and looking at targeted universalism, the need for early community engagement and measure planning, the need for firm evaluation standards that need to be worked into the next measure, questions about how new housing can increase revenue to the district, and looking at how public comment informs the PNO about the pulse of the community. Also, we wanted to let everyone know that you should be getting notice about an election for your school site councils and for the PNO. So make sure you vote, and the PNO looks forward to welcoming new members, current and old members. And lastly, the PNO had three members of the public who gave public comments. First two commenters highlighted a concern that BSEP's parcel tax funding structure is based on a city policy that inconsistently calculates what a taxable dwelling size is and the resulting concerns about inequitable taxing. And the third commenter invited members of the PNO to participate in committee work on multilingual master planning. So that's it. We're glad to be back, and we look forward to future conversations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pastico. Thanks for your continued service and for keeping us posted on what this critical committee is up to, and we really appreciate it. And now, it is time for Board Member, Board Member Comments and Superintendent Comments. So who would like to go first? Anybody? Director Babat, do you want to go? No? Director Vassidah?
Sure, I'll go first. Thank you, President Alper. Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. I appreciate everyone who came out to speak about so many varied issues concerning our schools, including student transportation, our vaccination mandate, and our student basketball practice areas, as well as our equity work. And Superintendent Stevens, I'd be curious in your comments if you could address some of those concerns raised by our student athletes. I also wanted to thank the Berkeley Federation of Teachers for their strong statement in support of a staff vaccination mandate. Although we're not addressing this issue tonight, I appreciate our teachers' union raising this really important issue that I know that other districts are actively thinking about as well. And I'd also like to thank our Youth Commission for providing public comment tonight about our, you know, the kind of public health issues that we're wrestling with. Your opinions as our students, as our youth, is so incredibly important to me. So thank you so much, and I really hope to see the Youth Commission out more often at our board meetings. I want to start off my comments by also wishing everyone un feliz mes de la herencia latina, Latinx. Happy Latinx Heritage Month. I'm so grateful to our district staff for their work to honor Latinx Heritage Month in our schools. And if you haven't done so already, I know that our superintendent sent out a newsletter last week with our new website to show how the district is celebrating Latinx Heritage Month. So there you're going to find reading lists, teacher resources, and information about local events that are happening, both virtually and in person, to celebrate Latinx Heritage Month. I also want to let the community know that we're in the process of organizing a district-wide community event with several community organizations. So there'll be more information about that coming soon, but I just wanted to let you know there's exciting things happening at a district-wide level for Latinx Heritage Month. Me comentarios en español también quería avisarle a la comunidad que el distrito ha preparado una página web con recursos sobre cómo celebrar el mes de la herencia latina. Aquí encontrarán recursos para maestros e información sobre eventos en la comunidad para celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana. También estamos organizando un evento virtual con Latinos Unidos de Berkeley y miembros de la comunidad para celebrar el mes de la herencia latina X, hoy, mes de la herencia hispana. I'm looking forward to tonight's discussion on several important items, and I posted about it on social media, but I just want to highlight that today, now there's three important topics in particular that I'm excited for. One is to discuss our internal policy to require vaccinations for students ages 12 and up. I'm really excited to hear the update on our 2020 Black Lives Matter resolution, and that we continue centering the very important work that we have to do as a district to address the achievement gap for black students. I'm also excited to hear the update on the Latinx resolution. Our discussion tonight about the vaccination mandate for students comes after weeks of discussion at the Board Policy Subcommittee. I'm honored to serve on this committee with our Board President, Ty Alper, and I'm also proud of the way that this draft policy came together with thoughtful input from our staff at our secondary schools and also from our labor partners. And so I just want the community to know, you know, these things aren't decided in a vacuum. They're vetted, they're discussed, and that lots of people come to the table to make these really important decisions. I'll save my more substantive comments for our discussion tonight, but I just want to reiterate that there's a lot of stake for our students this year, as you know, particularly around public health and health equity issues. We know that our Black, Latinx, and Indigenous communities are experiencing higher rates of COVID-19 infection, hospitalization, and death. As a board member, I will continue to advocate that we do everything that we can as a district to keep our students safe in school and agree with what one of our speakers said tonight during public comment, that this is a time to act boldly in light of the public health needs of our students. So I just want to thank everybody that came. I know there's people with lots of varied opinions, but I appreciate all of your opinions, no matter where you stand on these issues, and they're tough decisions. So thank you for taking the time to come and share your views with us.
Thank you, Director Vassidah. I would like to go next. Roxana?
Sure. I want to recognize and honor Latinx Heritage Month and thank the district for all of the work you did on putting together the resources. And I know that a lot of our teachers and staff also worked on bringing together those resources. So Associate Superintendent Orellito, I think you led the charge in partnership with a lot of our teachers and staff. So thank you for all the work that you did and Director Vassidah. I do want to clarify that backdrops don't work on my computer, so don't assume that because I don't have the backdrop that I don't think is, you know, a great month to celebrate. I also had the wonderful, good fortune last night of attending the first Facilities and Maintenance Subcommittee meeting last. And we did a really amazing review of all of the work our facilities, excuse me, facilities and maintenance team have done over the summer. And it has to do with COVID preparation, gardening, HVAC systems. And I just, I really want to publicly, at the board meeting, express my sincere appreciation for all of the work that our staff have done to keep our schools looking good and being safe for our students and staff. And it's a great committee to be on, and they work really hard. And I also want to express my support and interest in the conversations we're going to have on the Black Lives Matter and the Latinx resolutions. I want to flag right now in my board comments the really valuable partnerships that we have been developing or initiating, I would say, over the course of the last few months, as we look at how are we addressing the mental health needs of our students, the learning loss needs of our students, the equity issues our students are facing. And at the same time, you know, kind of flag, we've brought on a lot of new contracts and partnerships that are more than just vendors. They're actual substantive partnerships, and I really would like us to make sure we take the time for staff to really reflect, how are we going to cultivate those relationships so that the funding and the money that we put forward in these proposals for contracts, for services, actually demonstrate effectiveness and have the buy-in of the teachers and staff and the families at school sites. It's easy to approve contracts, it's hard to implement them. So I really want to make sure that these partnerships are not just on the surface, but they're deep, and we have the time to be able to cultivate and nurture them. And so, you know, I have a little bit of concerns with the multitude of partnerships that we're onboarding all at the same time. So I hope that as time goes on, we can get periodic reports from the superintendent and staff on how those partnerships are actually coming into fruition, and how are we measuring the success for those partnerships. And the last thing I'll say is I'm really looking forward to the vaccine conversation. It's a very complicated one. I am not a public health expert, nor do I play one on TV or anywhere else. And I, there's a lot for us to consider, and I'm a huge supporter of vaccines, and we'll get into the conversation more, but I it's a lot to take into consideration. So I really appreciate the members of the community who stick through the board meeting and hear the conversation and continue to provide us input through email and through our open office hours.
Thanks, Director Senna. Student Director Mustrenia Swan, do you have comments?
Yeah, well, I just first like to echo what Director Vasco said, and appreciate everyone who came out for public comment today. There was a lot. And, yeah, the discussions around vaccinations and also the needs for student athletics to be able to practice, and also for the statement from the BFT leader as well as the Youth Commission. The statements are very much appreciated. I'm also definitely looking forward to the conversation around vaccinations and hearing what. Yeah, I'm looking forward to the discussion and also to hear more about the resolutions for Black Lives Matter and for Latinx, the resolution for Latinx. I'm not sure what that is, but I wasn't here, I wasn't present during the creation of either of those, so, yeah.
All right, thank you. Director Babat?
Right, well, thank you to all of my board colleagues for your thoughtful comments. Definitely thank you all for your hard work on bringing all of these initiatives forward thus far. And I want to also thank the staff for the initiatives that we are bringing forth and all of these vendors that we are partnering with, and the ways in which we are making sure that we can do this in a very seamless rollout to the community and for faculty. I have actually had a wonderful last two weeks since our last board meeting, meeting with families, staff, visiting with our classrooms, learning about the work that our students and faculty are doing around sexual consent education and climate change. So I want to thank the third and fifth period classes that I visited at Berkeley High School, where I learned so much about consent education. For my generation, guess what? It's way more than no means no. It's actually only an absolute yes means yes. I learned about ARFRIS, which is the acronym that students are learning, which further clarifies what an absolute yes is, and just admiring the way our educators interact with our students. And just admiring the way our educators interact with our students, their confidence and bold leadership in teaching this subject. I want to point out that this was the ninth grade, these were ninth grade classes that I visited. And less than half the class had ever had any teaching or learning on consent education. So these conversations definitely need to happen earlier and more frequently. And they should also be happening at home. And so what I learned in the consent education class was invaluable to me as a parent and would be invaluable for a parent seminar. And I'm hoping that we can strive to hold, to hold one of these for our BUSD families. Everyone must be a part of the current conversation on sexual consent, harassment, and assault. And we must work harder to support those impacted by it. Secondly, I'm super proud of our students from our elementary airs to ocean students to our BHS Zero Waste Group, to those working with the Sierra Club to help bring forth an eco-literacy resolution in Berkeley. When our students find a topic that they are passionate about, they get busy. And I am glad to be an elected official who can support this work. I commend all of the adults that are helping them to guide them through this process and who are like me constantly blown away by their tenacious action-oriented leadership. You can see the joy in their eyes as they are working to make a difference. And I pray those seeds will continuously grow with much fruit to bear. I'm glad that we will be discussing the Black Lives Matter and Latinx resolutions tonight. And we'll save my comments regarding the vaccine mandate for that section of tonight's meeting. However, I would like to thank everyone who reached out to me, the board, and our superintendent to discuss this issue. I especially want to thank our Youth Commission for their letter and supporting information that they provided the board as we contemplate these decisions. Again, our young people are at work and I love it. Finally, regarding Latinx Heritage Month, I was thinking about who I would like to highlight. And I wanted to find someone mysterious to the community, but I also wanted to highlight someone that really impacted my life. And for that reason, I immediately thought of Jaime Escalante, the teacher the movie Stand and Deliver was based on. I remember watching that movie on repeat as a child. I loved seeing this passionate, passionate teacher and that in the words of Edward James Olmos, didn't just teach math, but like all great teachers, he changed lives. Escalante gained national prominence in the aftermath of a 1982 scandal surrounding 14 of his Garfield High School students who passed the Advanced Placement Calculus exam only to be accused later of cheating and required to take the exam again, which they passed again. Jaime Escalante has left a deep and enduring legacy in the struggle for academic equity in the American education, says Gaston Capperton, former West Virginia governor and president of the College Board, which sponsors the SAT and AP exams. His passionate belief was that all students, when properly prepared and motivated, can succeed at academically demanding coursework, no matter what their racial, social, or economic background. He is a pioneer which challenged educators everywhere to revise long-held notions of who can succeed. He pushed for tougher standards and accountability for students and educators. And for those reasons, I celebrate Jaime Escalante. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Babett. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, President Alper. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for coming out tonight. I would like to appreciate those who made public comments in regards to mandatory vaccinations and in support of the Transportation Committee and those who spoke tonight in support of gym accessibility for scholar athletes. And to my beloved commission, the Youth Commission, for coming out and speaking this evening. Although I gave a pre-Happy Latinx Heritage Month announcement last meeting, I wanted to formally take the opportunity to say Happy Latinx Heritage Month, since we are now officially in Latinx Heritage Month. This month, I'm doing an amazing project with my incredible students about Latinx scientists and their contributions to our society. From zoologists to astronomers, we have been educating ourselves, our families, and our school community about powerful, impactful, strong, smart, and groundbreaking Latinx scientists. In your own time, I would like to encourage you to learn about scientists like Luis Alvarez, Mario Molino, and even Ellen Ochoa, the first Latinx woman in the world to go into space. I am inspired and I promise you all will be as well. Finally, we have some pretty important items agendaed tonight from our vaccination conversation to the update on our 2020 Black Lives Matter resolution and our 2021 Latinx resolution. Two resolutions that I and I know all of us as board members hold very dear to our heart. I'll hold my comments for those specific presentations. But thank those again who spoke out tonight in support of all three. So thank you, President Alper, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. And I too want to wish everybody a happy Latinx Heritage Month and appreciate all the work that's gone into the district celebration of the month to come. We do have, as my colleagues have said, a number of really important discussions tonight. The one that I don't think anyone has mentioned yet, and it's first up is the BSEP Planning Measure Update, which is a critical discussion to begin the planning of our local special tax that expires, that'll go back before the voters in November of 2024. So I'm excited to hear about that and excited, excited to have both outgoing Director Natasha Berry and our new director Kathy Fleming here to present about that. I have a number of comments about the vaccine policy, but like my colleagues, I'm going to wait until we get to that item. If you're here listening for that item, it'll be, it'll be coming up fourth on the four of the four discussion items that we have tonight. And it is on the board's agenda for discussion, not for action, which means we won't, as a board, be voting on it tonight. We'll be discussing it, maybe giving direction to the Policy Subcommittee. And then if it's the will of the board, it would come back for a vote at a future meeting, probably the next meeting, but we will not be taking a vote tonight in case anyone was confused about that. So that I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Stevens, for your comments. And then we'll get right to the first discussion item of the night.
Great. Thank you very much, President Alper. So there are three special people among us, and I'm going to call you out one more time. I know you've been called out already, but I'd like to wish happy birthday to three of our colleagues. So that's Ruben Orellio, raise your hand so everybody can see you. And then off camera, here she is, Lisa Stup, happy birthday to you as well. And then also off camera, Ruth Steele-Brown, Director of our BRAD department. And there she is, happy birthday to every one of you. It's really a pleasure to work with you and I hope that you're having a wonderful week. And then I wonder, board members, will you join me, please? Can we give them all a little snap? I think they deserve that. There we go. Happy birthday to all of you. I'd love to talk a little bit as well about another colleague who is sort of closing out what is a really remarkable period of time and contributions to the Berkeley Unified School community. Just very shortly, Natasha Berry will be joined by Kathy Fleming to present on the BSEP budget. This is really the first of a number of presentations that the community will hear over the course of this year about BSEP. And for nearly a decade, BSEP has been taken care of so well by Natasha Berry, who has served as our Director of Community Relations and BSEP. It was sort of remarkable to see Natasha in her last formal sort of role as BSEP Director just last week in front of the BSEP Policy and Oversight Committee. And so just want to sort of note, I'm sure that as you will, as Natasha is giving this presentation, that this will sort of conclude a really remarkable run that has included the renewal of BSEP and has put BSEP on such a strong trajectory with our community and has engendered such a high level of trust among all of our community stakeholders. So thank you to you, Natasha Berry, for all of your service over the course of your time here in BUSD. I agree, Director Sana, a few more snaps. I think they're warranted. And then I'd also like to go on, as my colleagues on the board have done, just to welcome everybody to this month-long celebration of Latinx Heritage Month. I do hope that you'll check out our website. A number of educators have worked very hard to be able to create resources, both for our families and our educators. I think what's remarkable about this particular month is its connection to the celebrations earlier in the year, Black Lives Matter, sorry, the Black History Month, API Heritage Month in May. And these celebratory months simply would not be possible had it not been for the close collaboration both of board leaders and community advocates and staff. These are not sort of months that are coming into existence in isolation or in a vacuum, but rather coming as a result of both passion, of care, and ongoing collaboration with our own community to give these particular celebratory months their shape, their Berkeley flavor. So we do want to extend to all of our communities in Berkeley Unified an acknowledgement of your presence and acknowledgement of the importance of your contributions to our school district and an ongoing commitment to continue that dialogue. We hope, please, that you'll continue to partner with us and contribute to making our school district a better place for every single one of our students. As well, I'd like to talk a little bit about this evening's this evening's discussion about the COVID vaccination. This evening's discussion is the result of a number of Policy Subcommittee discussions at which we've heard the opinions and viewpoints of a number of important stakeholders, including teachers, including our union leaders. And so I do, as Director Vasilev, want to point out that this is the culmination of a number of discussions and in fact, not culmination, sort of continuation of these discussions. It's been our goal as a school district since the pandemic hit that we would try to strike the right balance of continuing education while keeping our community and our students and families safe. And I very much view that the discussions taking place in Policy Subcommittee and here at the board are a continuation of that effort to strike a balance between the interests of our community, keeping students in school, minimizing disruption to the educational trajectory of our students, while also putting the health of our students and community first. You will no doubt, members of the public, as you listen to this discussion, hear a number of thoughtful efforts to try and balance those various perspectives. And I've been very pleased to be able to work with board leaders, the Policy Subcommittee, and with the board in general to approach this sort of important policy decision with a level of thoughtfulness and care while holding together this sort of balance between minimizing disruption and maximizing safety. And then finally, I'll offer just a couple of comments about some of the public comment early, earlier in the evening about offseason sports and particularly basketball. Please know that we have been aware of a desire among our basketball players who are right now not sort of engaged in seasoned competition, but in preseason conditioning. I've been hearing this desire among the coach and the students that we also instituted a testing program and make available athletic spaces for them. So please know that we are in active discussion. I was able to meet with the athletic directors today about this. There's a number of sort of considerations that we have to weigh, including the expansion of testing to grades seven and eight, while we weigh sort of important issues about surveillance testing staffing and supply kits. But do you know that we are thinking about this? I imagine that we're going to have more news for our preseason or offseason athletes. If not by the end of this week, then I would expect by next week. But you know that we are working on it and we do appreciate all of the comments this evening about the importance of being able to engage in preseason conditioning and do that safely. So with that, President Alper, I'm going to turn it back over to you and appreciate the opportunity to provide a few updates.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. Now it's time for our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Director Babett. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Vice President Brown. Ms. Chiras, can you call a roll?
Director Muscati, yes. Yes. Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes, thank you. All right. As we start the first of four discussion items, I just want to remind everyone that we have, these are all important discussions, but we do have four of them. So if we could keep the presentations crisp and the questions efficient, that would be great. And the answers too. It's good to see you both, Director Berry, Director Fleming. Dr. Stevens, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, and in fact, I'm just turning it directly over to them. So I'm going to let them take it away.
Great.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Fleming. Good evening to you, Directors and Superintendent Stevens. And I'm here with outgoing Director Natasha Berry. And we're here to present a presentation that we presented to the Policy and Oversight Committee last week. And Natasha will be sharing her screen and she and I will be alternating presenting the slides. I'd like to just stop and thank Natasha publicly for all of her support in onboarding me and ensuring that I know critical information and understand as much as I can about BSEP and BARA as I assume this very important role. So thank you, Natasha. Really appreciate it. You've been awesome. Okay, so tonight, we are presenting an overview of the leadership transition, a small review of BSEP funding, the reauthorization timeline, the HQI trajectory. HQI is the High Quality Instruction Programs, which includes the class size reduction and support for teaching programs. It's 66% of the budget. And then we'll look at some budget takeaways and then we'll move on to questions and discussion.
Thank you, Director Fleming, and good evening, board and superintendent leaders and community. I'm just going to give you a quick update to explain what you're witnessing tonight, which is the handing, the passing of the torch from me as the Director of BSEP and Community Relations to the Director of Local Resources and Partnerships, Kathy Fleming. This comes after we made a decision that we reported to the board and discussed with the board last spring of reorganizing the Office of BSEP and Community Relations. Now that we have, as you've heard, BSEP and BARA, the second measure that was added in 2020, accounting for 25% of the resources of this district and also with communications and community relations growing in scope every year. It seemed important to be able to refocus the attention on our local resources within a single directorship. And that is then the Director of Local Resources and Partnerships. You'll see in this Venn diagram, the core remains the same, the oversight of BSEP and BARA, advising managers and district leaders on the use of these resources, including working with the Planning and Oversight Committee and the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee and the oversight of the staffing that relates directly to the management of these resources. What you'll see that's different over on the right is that the incoming director, which is a certificated position, is overseeing a teacher on special assignment, which is responsible for many of the special programs of the Berkeley Educators Recruitment and Retention Act, as well as being a liaison for some related community partnerships related to BSEP and BARA and then works with, very directly with superintendent, but is more closely connected to the programs within Ed Services meets with that team. Meanwhile, the elements that are not in that position, so we just wanted the board to know that, that Director Fleming does not have the oversight of the communications team that belongs, will belong to a new position, which is the Senior Communications Officer. And they will also oversee the translator and then community engagement and special projects, of which there are many, will be distributed elsewhere among leadership in the district. I just want to take a moment to say how really thrilled I am that Kathy Fleming stepped up to apply for this position. I could not have imagined someone better qualified in that she comes to us with nine years' experience from San Francisco Unified, working with a very similar fund, the Public Education Enrichment Fund. And so she has experience with oversight committees, with stakeholder engagement. She also comes with several years' experience as a poly, policy analyst inside the Curriculum and Instruction Department with a particular focus on the arts. She has experience in program evaluation and in mapping of programs. So I am absolutely delighted that she will be here to carry the oversight of this measure forward. And I'm going to turn it back to Director Fleming, who's going to talk to you about why BSEP matters.
Great. Thank you, Director Berry, for that introduction. I was also a teacher for 20 years, FYI, everybody. Okay, so we'd like to thank the voters of Berkeley for continuously supporting BSEP. BSEP was first authorized in 1986 and it provides critical funding for very important programs, among which include smaller class size, visual and performing arts, our library support, tech support, and funding for other school programs, as well as social, emotional, and academic support programs. and funding for other school programs, as well as social, emotional, and academic support programs.
So despite the fact that the measure that we currently live with, Measure E1, is built upon several preceding measures going back to 1986, we cannot take the renewal of any measure for granted. And furthermore, we need to look carefully at each juncture as to the structure of the measure to make sure that it's keeping up with the current needs and the funding sources within the district. So even though this measure goes until 2024, 25, and needs to be before a new measure needs to go before the voters in 2024, that may sound like it's a long way away, but it really is around the corner. I came to the district to take this position in 2012, which was four years before the renewal of the prior measure. And I was already being asked what I was going to be doing to ensure that the next measure was successful. So already that we're having conversations with the Planning and Oversight Committee, with the BSEP managers and other district leaders to look at the current measure. And you're going to be hearing a little bit more about that in the remainder of this presentation. But we need to queue up those discussions so that we are aware of what we need to do to ensure that the next measure, which needs to be carefully constructed in the 22, 23, 24 period with a number of working groups, looking at our educational priorities, at our budget needs, and ensuring that there's community engagement so that the next measure is built to last. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Director Fleming.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we want to emphasize that we need to pay attention to our budget trends to ensure that we're in good shape going into the next measure. And to begin our analysis this year, we want to look specifically at the HQI, High Quality Instruction, budget. And the reason for that is that it is two-thirds of the overall budget. And there are some moving parts that we need to consider in our planning this year. So we're really trying to start early, the process of looking at how this funding works and the need for reductions moving moving forward. And and just a reminder that the first thing we do with the with the revenue in HQI is we fund first the class size reduction to ensure we're meeting our class size goals. And the remaining revenue is earmarked for the four programs under support for teaching. That's professional development, program evaluation, classroom support, and expanded course offerings. Classroom support and expanded course offerings are positions working in school sites, in classes, and in support roles. Next. Great. So this analysis is designed to show the relationship between revenues and expenditures and their impact on the fund balance ongoing through the life of the measure. We've made a number of assumptions in this analysis. And the first thing I'd like to point out is that the figures for 21, 22, that is this year, year five, are reflect the figures that were presented in the spring budgets. So there needs, an update needs to happen, which is one of our next steps. But for now, we assumed that our COLA moving forward would be 1%. It could come in higher. We also assumed that enrollment is flat, which could also increase or decrease. And also, we assumed that the teacher costs were consistent, only adding a 1% for annual step in column. Just to note that we're not making a statement on any increases that may come in the future due to bargaining. This is just to reflect a minor increase of step in column and not benefits either. So we do expect increases there as well. So as I mentioned before, first, we fund the class size reduction budget and the remaining funds are for the programs. So as you can see, each year, we're we're having deficit spending, it's planned deficit spending. And the goal is to end the measure with a positive balance going into the new measure. So, next slide, please. So in summary, this is very short, to the point, but in summary, there are a number of factors that remain that are variables that impact the fund balance ongoing, and they are the COLA, the enrollment, and the teacher costs. And most likely, we will have reductions necessary through each year, remaining year of the measure, in order to end with a positive fund balance. And that we are going to frequently update this analysis, first beginning this fall with actuals and going to the PNO regularly with this information so that we can have informed decision-making about the out years. And lastly, we do want to prevent the need to increase taxes in the next measure or rely on the general fund. And we also do not want to go into the next measure, supporting programs that that the revenue can't support. So these are some reasons why we need to start looking at this budget now. And the reason we're here now is to kind of queue this up for folks. And at this point, we'd like to turn it over for questions and discussion about the trajectory of the of the BSEP budget in the HQI area and/or the measure planning, the planning process for the next measure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both so much. That was, that was great. And and the first I know, as you said, of of many board discussions and presentations over the coming years. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions, Director Babett? No? Okay. Director Sinai?
Oh, Director Babett had her hand up. Did she take it down?
I think she she, it was a legacy hand.
Sorry, I was, I was trying to do a heart emoji when Kathy said she was a teacher for 20 years.
Director Babett pointed out to me that we somehow don't have emoji capabilities at this board. It's the state of public education these days. Anyway, go ahead, Director Sinai.
Director Fleming, really nice to meet you. Great to have you here and thank you for your presentation. And Director Berry, oh, thank you for everything you've done. We are going to so miss you. And I'm sure we are going to continue to see you around, though, I hope. I won't ask if my, as we plan for 2024, where you'll be in these planning efforts. I have a question in the sense that as we kind of look at making the shift to our budget, our current budget to planning for the future. And I don't know if we did this before, because I don't think I was on the board when we did it last time. But you know, if we have an equity rubric that we look at our BSEP investments and how they're aligned with our equity goals and how they impact, you know, our our outcomes, our student outcomes, and how that might go into our planning for the coming measure. You know, I guess I just want to flag it, not necessarily answer it. But I would really like us, you know, we've got our Black Lives Matter resolution, we have our Latinx resolution, but BSEP is a third of our budget. And I'd really like to know, a third of our teachers, you know, and so how are our BSEP dollars supporting our our equity goals?
Great. Director Babett now is raising her actual hand.
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation. And thank you, Natasha Berry, for all of your hard work over the years with BSEP. As someone who's been on the PNO committee for many, many, many years, thank you for taking all of my challenging questions and being so gracious over the years as we really did strive to to make sure that we were spending those funds wisely according to the measure and with purposes to close our longstanding opportunity gap in BUSD. I still want to say thank you, Kathy, for joining the team. I look forward to your leadership in this area. And just so you know, I'm the PNO board rep. So board members, when Teri Pastica gives us those updates, she's really hitting all the all the nails which were planted or all the seeds which were planted. And so I just want to appreciate the work that the and the thoughtfulness that our PNO committee provides in this area. And thank you all for for working out those those nuances now in our different leadership structure that's been pointed out and for always being very responsive to our parent community because they really do care deeply. And we are very fortunate to get so much volunteer expertise with the time that they donate in helping us make a difference in BUSD. So thanks again.
Thank you, Director Babett. Director Vasudev?
Yeah, I just had a comment, but I also wanted to echo my appreciation to you, Natasha, for all your great work, Director Berry, serving our district. And also, I don't know, you probably don't even remember the my, the first time that I served on site council. I remember I went to one of your orientations with a big binder and you came and, you know, you prepared parents to take up the role to to engage, you know, with PNO and to prepare for site council, prepare to serve the district. And so I owe a lot of a lot of just my knowledge building in the district to your work and to your leadership. So thank you so much and we'll miss you so much. And welcome to Ms. Fleming. So excited to have you here. I was on the phone recently with one of the commissioners in San Francisco and she spoke so highly about you and said, you're so lucky, Berkeley is so lucky. And I and I couldn't agree more. So thank you so much for being here and for serving our district. I, one of the things, you know, as we move forward and plan for the next measure, right? I think there is, I want to appreciate the comments made by Director Sinai about our equity rubric and, you know, how it's working. But I think that sometimes at the board meetings, we don't drill down like what happens at PNO, right? Like, we don't get into the details of, you know, we do look at equity within, you know, our music program in VAPA and within our library services. And I feel like there, we should create more opportunity to report out on how we're doing, right, on our equitable goals. I know that the discussion happens because I go to the PNO meetings and I see the discussion there. But sometimes that part of the discussion doesn't always get reported out. And so, you know, I don't know what the the best mechanism is to do it. But I think that, you know, updating the board periodically, when we drill down, we have these really fruitful conversations around equity at the PNO meetings, right, like how how we update the board on those different equity discussions, I think will be important. And also communicate out to the public, right, so that they understand like how equity, how we're looking at all of these, you know, different funding streams, different programmatic funding goals through through an equity lens. But I feel like a lot of the discussion happens at PNO and doesn't get reported out. So that's my constructive feedback is to do that more, right? And to make sure that we're reporting it out to the PTA council, to the other parent groups as well, so that they can build up their knowledge base as we prepare, you know, for the renewal and a lot of, you know, education has to go beyond the district, right? It has to go citywide. And so that we do that more often and let me know how I can, I can support with that, too.
Thanks, Director Vasudev. Vice President Brown?
Thank you so much, Director Berry, for your presentation and also Director Fleming. As everyone else has already said, Director Berry, you have been a GM in BUSD far longer than I've been a school board director. But your impact will be one that is longstanding. And so we appreciate you for everything that you've done. And Director Fleming, welcome. It's so wonderful to meet you. And thank you both for your presentation and also to Teri, thank you for your update earlier. It really is helpful to be able to to hear those updates, to help inform these conversations. It's really, there's something you said about waiting to raise your hand, because every question that you have, all the school board direct. So I gotta, I gotta get better with that. But some feedback that I wanted to share, something that I wanted to something that I wanted to to share, to ask, was around information, how it can be accessible to the community, especially as we prepare for 2024. It feels like Director Vasudev said, if you're not a part of PNO or if you are not able to come to the board meetings to hear updates, you are not privy to this information. And so I'm not sure what it looks like through a website, through additional town hall meetings or sessions to invite the community. But definitely taking an opportunity to give more community outreach, not just for for members of our community who have children in the district, but those who live in the communities where our our schools are. I think that would be important for them to know and to be informed about as well. But thank you so much for your presentation. You will greatly be missed. And Director Fleming, welcome.
Thank you. All right, I'm in, I'm in to, I'm deep in the throes of denial. So I'm not going to say anything about you, Director Berry. But but we're, but I'm really excited to have you on board, Director Fleming. And I know we'll be seeing you again soon, Natasha. All right. Thank you both so much. It's time to move on to our next discussion item, which is the update on the 2020 Black Lives Matter Resolution. So Dr. Stevens, I'll turn it over to you. I'm not sure who's.
Yes, and I'm, thanks, President Alper. And I'm turning it over to our Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio.
And good evening. If I can find the slide deck, sorry about that, folks, it's popping up right now. Okay. And okay, everyone should now see the slide deck in front of, yes, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Ruben Aurelio, Associate Superintendent. And this evening, I am with three of our Ed Services team members. Lisa Stupin, Director of Categorical and Special Projects, Ruth Steel Brown, Director of Brea, who will be her first time presenting in front of you all, and Kamara Guin, Manager of African-American Success. They will be helping us during this presentation to provide you all an update on the Black Lives Matter Resolution. And I went too far. So in tonight's presentation, we're just going to give you a little background on the why, why we are, we have this resolution. And then we're going to present some information around the resolved clauses and an update on some of the action items that are listed in the resolution itself, including an update on the partnerships. We have some timelines and then next steps. We also have a bit of data to share with you. Not the deepest dive in data, as you're aware. As we're starting the new year, obviously, coming off of the COVID pandemic, the data is an area we are going to be building as we go. So we'll get just a brief update on data. And I'm going to be turning it over to Lisa Stupin.
Thank you. So good evening, President Alfer and Directors and Superintendent Stevens. So my first slide is about why the Black Lives Matter Resolution. So as you all know, June 2020, the School Board passed a resolution in support of the Black Lives Matter movement and to, which addresses systematic racism in our school. So what we're finding is that the data in our district is showing that our black students are more likely to be suspended or identified as special education, for education, special education. So what does that mean? The resolution then calls for specific actions. I know that the board, I wasn't here yet, but the board was provided an update back in November, on November 18, 2020. And then in the spring of 2021, budget planning began, which included extensive investments in the development of the district's African-American success framework. Next slide, please. So this slide is depicting the current status of the resolution. So I'm just going to go through this. The Black Lives Matter banner is is complete. It is current and up in the boardroom. The Black Lives Matter at School Week, it is currently planned for February 2022. Resources for educators and families. We do have a new Ethnic Studies TSA that has been hired. Black Joy Campaign has not started yet, the work behind that. In support of providing resources that focus on the well-being of black families, we are working in conjunction, the district and our partners, on that renaming process for Jefferson and Washington. The Washington renaming is currently in process now. Proactively identifying class and cultural biases. There is professional development that will be going on for the equity and teacher leaders at the school sites. And identify additional measures, sorry about that, of racial inequity. So in collaboration, the Brea team and the Office of Family Engagement and Equity are going to be working together to provide current and updated data. Next slide, please.
I'd like to introduce Director Ruth Steel Brown. She's going to walk us through a few of these data slides. This is our new Director of the Brea Department.
Thank you, Ruben. Good evening, everybody. So there are just three slides that speak to different elements of the data around this resolution. This first one is basic enrollment for the school district as a whole. So there's really, the only real trends and patterns you'll notice on this one, because most groups are enrolled fairly consistently at elementary, middle, and high school. But you'll notice with Asian students, there are a larger percentage of them coming in in elementary school. So that group is growing slightly. And what you'll notice with the black student population is they seem to be shrinking slightly in elementary school. So you can see trends on those first two lines for kind of, it's not a massive change, it's about a 3% to 4% change. But there is definitely a shift in the percentage of students you're seeing now in those two groups at elementary, middle, and high school. The other groups listed on this slide are relatively consistent in terms of their representation across those grade levels. But those first two groups, you can definitely see there appears to be a slight shift in either direction with our Asian and black student populations. So that was the one piece I wanted to highlight on that particular slide. Next slide, please. So this slide's a little busier. This is our math data. And math is always a work in progress. Wherever I worked, math has been a work in progress. And, uh, that's clearly the case. In Berkeley as well, particularly when you look at our black student population. So what you'll notice on here, there's data from three years. And these are the semester one and semester two grades for students if they received either a D, an F, or a no pass. They would get credit for a D grade. It's a passing grade. It's not UC eligible, of course, but it is a passing grade. For F or a no pass, a student would not receive any credit. So you can see, um, some consistent patterns across each of those columns. If you look at 2019, 20, that second column that's highlighted in blue, that's when students were not given letter grades. They were given a pass, no pass. That was the second semester of last year. So you'll see marks dropped in that failure rate because most students were able to pass when they would be given a pass fail grade. But there were still some students who weren't able to achieve a passing grade even with that, um, allowance made, which many school districts did last year. The, the piece that I'm sure stands out to everybody is how high the failure rate is for black students. It's significantly higher than any other group represented in this graph. Latinx students, um, were getting D and F grades at about 20% of that population, but African American students, black students, it's much higher, closer to 45, almost 48%. So that's, that's a really high number. Um, and clearly there's work to be done in uncovering particularly why those patterns are occurring and what sorts of supports and interventions can be put in place to change that, those outcomes for our black students. Next slide, please.
And Ruth, if I could just add briefly, we chose specifically this data, the ninth grade math one data, because we know that passing this class really sets our high school students up to be A to G eligible and be college and career ready. So that's how we focus specifically on this course.
Thank you. Yes, I forgot to mention that. This is, I think, my last slide in this particular presentation. And this is just to highlight attendance rates for the first month of school. So these will become more solidified as we go through the school year and hopefully they'll stay high. Usually attendance rates tend to worsen over the semester. So hopefully they'll stay nice and high. But you can see on here again that, um, the black students represented on this slide are attending school at a lower rate than the other subgroups represented, particularly in high school. Eighty-four percent as an average attendance rate is low. And there's always a correlation between academic performance and attendance rates. So it's reasonable that if we were able to raise attendance rates, there would also be a corresponding raise in academic achievement. You tend to see those two things tightly connected. For most of the other subgroups on this slide, they're, they're attending school between like 93 and 94%. So that particular data point with each of those numbers being under 90% is definitely significant. So that was the one piece that I wanted to highlight on that particular slide. And I think I'm handing back over to Lisa, Ruben.
Lisa, I believe.
It's me. Good evening, uh, Board of Directors, as well as, uh, BUSD colleagues, uh, for members that are public and those I'm not acquainted with. My name is Kamara Guin. I manage the BUSD African American Success Project. I'll be covering the next three slides, uh, which contains information about some of our strategic partnerships, as well as a recommended timeline. So it's the circumstances of last year, uh, coupled with some of the initial research and findings and recommendations from RT Fisher and team. We really felt like it was important to uplift a few priorities this school year. Uh, the first is to increase direct services for students and families. Uh, the second is to build staff capacity around establishing processes and practices that support intentional alignment of, of services and supports, as well as developing a multi-year plan that can serve as a framework for student success. I'd like to acknowledge that there are many staff members and providers in BUSD who are invested in supporting student success and we recognize their efforts. Uh, but we believe that all of the partners that are listed here on this slide are going to be both complimentary to the services that are currently happening, as well as be able to fulfill some of the gaps in services that we're seeing. The board is probably most familiar with RT Fisher. And again, this, this list here is not exhaustive, but it is representative of some of the work to come for this school year. Uh, RT Fisher will be continuing and her team, uh, some of the efforts from last school year, which will include an uptick this year in direct services for students. Uh, there will be an expansion of the STEM Steps program further down the elementary pipeline. So now they're going to be covering grades three through eight. As well as some intensive support at our visionary schools per our C-Says Plan. And increased efforts to bring forward some focus groups and some community listening campaigns, particularly at Berkeley High School and BTA, because that wasn't really included um, in the last year's kind of sessions. Those are a little bit different from the principal's learning, um, kind of campaigns that happened with parents last year. So it's important to kind of make that distinction between the two. Lastly, perhaps the, the biggest benefit for us with, uh, Dr. Fisher and team is the work that she'll be doing to help build our own internal staff capacity and to shore up some of our gaps in some of our teams to make sure that the work that we're doing now is going to pay some dividends, uh, both in the short term, but in long term as well. In the second column, probably less familiar to the board would be College Bound. College Bound is going to bring forth a multi-layer of, of work, including direct case management for students, as well as, uh, family engagement components, both at Berkeley High School as well as BTA. And their mission is really centered around increasing post-secondary options for students, which of course include college eligibility, but are also looking at other options for students once they leave the high school. Young, gifted and black is a continued partner with us and will continue to provide enrichment opportunities for students after school. And as well this year, they'll be leaning into some professional development around, uh, cultural mindfulness and a four-part series designed to establish and align shared language and, uh, issues around equity and inclusion, as well as, um, their kind of work with our, um, YGB parents as well. Just want to uplift that work also. Next slide, please. It's been quite some time since the board. Is this the next slide?
Yes, the timeline. And I think, oh, sorry, the, the next one is the emoji slide. I think, yeah, timeline.
Got it. Yep. Uh, so this is a, a fluid timeline that is meant to really outlay a, a process opposed to, we have the dates there um, of the months. But what's really important is for us to think about, how do we take, and it's already been said this evening, that approving the contracts are easy, but implementing them and bringing them from central office to, to the sites is, um, the most difficult process in this. And so although there are recommended, recommended dates there, there has really been some behind the scenes collaborative partner readings that RT Fisher, Dr. Fisher has put on. And you can expect, uh, in a Friday note update, a more comprehensive timeline that outlines specific dates for all of these initiatives. But however, I want to just walk you through what this is here to represent. The first is alignment, behind the scenes, central office alignment around vision and purpose across all of our partners. And using data to make sure that no student is left, uh, without, uh, specific supports. From there, we begin to do our interfacing with our sites and having collaboration to make sure that what vision we have here at the central office really is in tune with the stakeholders and the site teams in terms of what they feel like these partners should do on the ground, on campuses and at sites. We hope for all of these partners that we are able to begin implementation at some point in October. And then from October until really about late spring, looking at progress monitoring and resolving any issues, implementation, as well as then using the learnings from this year's and some of these outcomes to do future planning around our framework development. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, and then lastly, it's been quite some time since we've had, um, a full, robust emoji program update. Uh, we won't get into details about the last three years, but I did want to give an enrollment, um, kind of snapshot really quickly. Uh, we started, uh, 1920 school year with a small cohort of seven hundred and eighty students in two sections. And you can see over the progress of the last two school years, we've increased both the direct student enrollment, uh, as well as we've increased the number of sections at Longfellow Middle School. This is important to highlight and note because two of the years, it has been impacted heavily by COVID. And so this would actually be the first year if we were able to stay and remain in person that we've had the emoji program actually in, in person for an entire school year. I did want to give kudos to the board. Uh, you made some investments in, um, an extended day over at Longfellow. And I really think that that move has, um, brought in the opportunities for students to enroll and take, and take emotion. So you look at that growth, that growth is, that growth is also, uh, in part because students who need to take intervention classes during the school day also have an opportunity to take both, uh, their intervention classes as well as an elective. And lastly, uh, as we're looking at emoji and the rest of the service providers, as Dr. Fisher has already said in some of her initial reports, we're really looking at building out cohorts that we can track over time and that we can put investments, uh, in those, uh, particular cohorts to see uh, how well they're helping us progress with some of our objectives and measures that we want to accomplish. Thank you.
And lastly, just to close, to close it out, I want to thank my team. Fantastic job this evening. It's been a pleasure getting to know this team and really a draw for me coming in as an new Associate Superintendent. Really thank the board for having these resolutions in place. It is a great step forward in ensuring that we are aligning all our work and ensuring our African American black students are getting everything possible out of school. And we will, we're here for questions.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you so much to all of you and, and welcome, Director Steel Brown. I don't, I don't think we've really had a chance to meet you yet, but, um, we've all heard such great things about your leadership already of the Brea Department. So thank you for being here. Uh, and I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, my colleagues now for questions and comments. We'll start with Director Babett.
Thank you so much and thank you for, uh, that presentation and thank all of you for all of your collaborative work. To really make sure that this resolution has life and reaches our students, impacts fully. I have a question about the Black Joy Campaign and it not being started yet. And what is the plan for that? Just so people know, the Black Joy Campaign is very important for, um, students to be, to feel successful and to be seen and in celebrating their success, right? When we see this data, we automatically talk about how many students are failing. This is our way of trying to uplift all of those who need to be celebrated for all of the ways in which they are successful, right? Academically, socially, emotionally, whatever they're into, the things that they're doing. So it really is important that we start this work, um, especially given this is now year two of this, um, resolution. And so want to know what the plan is for that. When you mentioned, um, math and, and why this data point is being highlighted, I'd like to also, um, ask what is your plan to address math in BUSD and hope that you know of all of the work with our math advocates that they've put together, a, a really good framework and, and guideline. And I'd be happy to, um, to forward that to you all. But, um, I was just talking with, um, Jesse Luxford of our Bridge Program. And she was talking about Saturday Math Academies just for this reason. Right? Um, we know we've had partners, we've had parents come up with math parties and math games. So it really is time for us to take greater ownership in how we address this math crisis in BUSD. And I could go on and on, but I won't. So I will just allow my other colleagues and raise my hand again if I need to later. But thanks again, and please let me know the responses to those two important questions.
Thanks, Director Babett. Um, Associate Superintendent Aurelio.
So I, I'm going to defer on the Black Joy Campaign. I don't know if Dr. Stevens has some background, because I will need some background on that specific item. But as far, as far as math, you are correct. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. We actually agreed, directed my team, our next sort of Ed Services presentation will be a math presentation. So we'll be coming back to you in Oc- in October with more specific items around math and math instruction in our district and especially interventions. I do know that within the LCAP that was adopted, there's really specific items that we've added. Math support classrooms, interventions at the high school, middle school levels that are specifically named that we've added staffing to. Um, so we want to make sure when we come back to you October specifically about math, that we not only just give you a math presentation, but we highlight, for example, the specific student groups and how they're being impacted.
And I might jump in, uh, Director Babett. I appreciate the question about the, the Black Joy Campaign. We recognize that it is, um, the single remaining element of the resolution that we haven't started yet. Uh, we've been able to accomplish a lot on multiple lines of the resolution. And this is very clearly the next, the next line of work that we have to pick up. I'm imagining that this must be work that we do directly with our community. And what we're trying to do is elevate the experience of our own black families here in the district, uh, and to try and counter narratives that can very often be misleading about African American and black families here in Berkeley. Uh, and so to do that, we've got to reach out to families, uh, and we need somebody who can help us do that in a way that's going to be culturally sensitive, relevant to their experiences and communicate this larger message, which is the intent of this line of the resolution. So I don't have, I can't articulate exactly how we intend to do that, but it's very clear to us that this is the next line of work that we need to pick up with respect to the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Brown.
Thank you so much. I wanted, since we're on the topic about the, um, Black Joy Campaign, I did want to, did want to address it as well. I think that in writing the, in preparing the resolution, the Black Joy Campaign, what came out of, this entire resolution came out as a response to what was happening in our communities across the nation after, um, the, the murder of George Floyd. And so the purpose of the Black Joy Campaign, line in the resolution was to celebrate and highlight black excellence around the schools. And so my concern is that this should have been one of the easiest lifts of them all to have signage, posters, supplemental curriculum, books that celebrate black joy and black excellence. Um, in addition to bringing in our students, our families, um, with their pictures around campus, if, if possible. But the, but celebrating our, our young people and, um, I'm deeply concerned that that part hasn't begun. Because that should be the, the easiest lift of it all. So, um, if you're asking for direction, Superintendent Stevens, my direction, uh, would be to, to work on that immediately. If we have the, the opportunity, because I think something like that can afford to wait. Okay. In addition, Director Babett hit the nail right on the, the head, um, in, in regards to our math. But, but first let me take a step back to say thank you, because we also have to make sure that we say thank you for all of the wonderful presentations that you all do and hours that you spend preparing, um, these presentations. And I was really excited to hear about some amazing updates, right? Like our Black Lives Matter partners, um, and RT Fisher, College Bound, Young, like, Get to the Black, as well as, um, who are doing amazing, amazing work. Um, as well as the updates to the emoji program, that were, that were spoken about this evening. But I also saw incredibly concerning things in the presentation, like the ninth grade math one data. Director Steel Brown, you said something that really, um, stuck with me. There's, of course, a direct correlation between attendance and, uh, achievement, right? Because I, I say this all the time, students cannot learn if they are not in the seats. However, there's also a strong correlation between engagement and intervention, right? And achievement. And so, um, when you have the opportunity, can you please talk to us? I know, um, Associate Superintendent, you spoke a little bit about, um, the math presentation that'll come in October, but I want to hear a little bit more about, uh, the district's plan to address engagement, right? And intervention with an equity focus, um, engagement with an equity focus and intervention for our students who are disproportionately failing. It's disproportionately failing math based off of the data that you presented tonight, as well as um, our overall data from our state mandated assessments, which we, um, don't talk about as often as we should. And so, um, I, I, I would really love to know what our plans are around that, how we plan to, um, address it. And also how we, uh, plan to have more buy-in for students, right? As a math teacher myself, I realize that engagement is about, like, high engagement for students is about their ability to see themselves in the content, their ability to directly, um, relate to the content. So what, what are we doing in part, in terms of engagement, in terms of, in terms of, uh, culturally relevant, culturally responsive education? What are we doing in terms of intervention? Um, if you could touch on that for a second, and then I'll come back around for my other questions after my, uh, board colleagues have spoken.
I'm going to jump in. I'm looking at my, my colleagues. So I would say, Vice President Brown, first and foremost, to, I know as we start the year, the data that our teachers have and some of them, making sure that they're identifying the students that need the additional support is going to be really key. They are in the middle of assessments right now, assessing their students, getting that information. I know that the Ford and the district has put money behind additional intervention classes and courses, especially at the middle some levels. Now that is all already occurring with our students. Now, as far as engagement, I, I agree with you that literature, for example, Now, as far as engagement, I agree with you that literature, for example, for our elementary aged students finding books that mirror what they look like is really key and important. I know that our library services, they are adding books to their, to the libraries. I know that the LCAP also put aside dollars for that as well, specifically named that in our LCAP. So that is something that they are working on. Not sure if Lisa or Ruth have anything to add to that specifically, or even if Dr. Stevens, you wanted to add.
I have something to add if possible.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted, I was rushing through the presentation just because I wanted to prioritize time for this discussion. But in, in the couple of slides that I had, it was the, the kind of dual process of returning back to school and making sure we're giving direct services and interventions to students through some of the new partners. But as well as looking at internally, how are we using and building our capacity? So that when partners begin to perhaps sunset, or sometimes we get into budget concerns, we have already then utilized those relationships that someone mentioned earlier, right? And partner with those individuals to learn as much as we can around how to best service our students. And so I don't want to miss that, that although we came with new programming and new energy for this year, that also in the ed services team underneath our brother, there'll be simultaneously some work that is happening to shore up our capacity in those areas that have just been mentioned.
Thank you, Kamara, for, for that response. And if I could just add one more thing. The last time we had this presentation for the Black Lives Matter Resolution, the board gave a specific direction, and when I say the board, I mean me, gave specific direction about how we needed to hear updates that focus not just on the social aspect of our students being in school, but the academic acts, aspect and how we are better preparing our students and better serving our students. And although that was addressed slightly in tonight's presentation, I would like to give directions for future presentations that that's a highlight. Thank you.
Director Vasudev.
Thank you. I think that Director Sinai had her hand up before me. Did you?
Sorry.
That's okay. You can go.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to give a really brief comment. Something that Mr. Gwen said that really stuck to me was that the seventh day period has contributed to more students being enrolled in EMOJA. And I think that's great. Like, I think this is not, you know, in, this is not the topic that we're talking about right now, but as part of our middle school assignment. I will say that it's important that we look at, you know, the positive, the positive impact that something like the seventh day period could have, right? And culturally affirming programs in our schools. So I don't want to lose that momentum, right? And I think that in order for that to happen, it's really important that we do have authentic engagement, particularly with our black families at the middle school level, right? If we're seeing the grades in math decline when, when we get to that high school. And I think, you know, Associate Superintendent Aurelio, you really were intentional about pointing out that ninth grade metric that we, that we engage with our black families, particularly those entering into the sixth grade, right? Like what, what would it look like to have an EMOJA program at your middle school, right? Like, and I know that as we think about, you know, we have to think about a lot of things in the future, like budgeting issues. But as we think, if we're going to be an anti-racist district, right? And we're building these culturally affirming programs that we do that with intentionality too, in the way that we're thinking about our middle school assignment. And also for, you know, our EMOJA program and our Gwenda program, and that we're engaging our families so that when we see those ninth grade numbers, right? They look a lot better because we started interventions much earlier and we started that authentic engagement much earlier. So I think that data, that data point that you shared, Mr. Gwen, I'd be really curious to, to see how we're serving our families at the end of the school year about their, you know, how the EMOJA program felt this year as opposed to, you know, previous years being virtual, but like in person. It's a more robust program that we see that more robust participation and how that impacts the programming, you know, of, of, you know, our middle school. And as we look at our middle school assignment, right? Like that, that we're really intentional about that. So thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Then I think, you know, my other comment, I just want to echo and uplift the comments made by Vice President Brown. The importance of dashboarding and reporting, you know, frequent reporting on, you know, academic performance, that's just such a valuable part. The social and emotional part as well, but I'm just, you know, really being laser focused on academic achievement. And I think the last, the last question I had was about truancy. What's lead, you know, have we surveyed those families? When we look at attendance data, right? Have we been serving families to better understand what's causing that low percentage in attendance?
Okay. Thank you, Director Vasudev, Director Sinai, and then Director Muscarini Swann.
Thank you. And I really want to thank and appreciate all of you for making the presentation. I guess I have one, I have, well, I have some comments and a couple of questions, but, and I was trying, trying not to make this comment, but I, I just can't, I can't not. For those of you, many of you are new to the district and I really appreciate your fresh eyes coming in and looking at what we need to do. But when I look at the data, I see the same data that we saw in 1999 and 2000, when parents of children of African descent formed and came to the superintendent and came to the school board and went to the city council eventually. Because of the DNF rate of our African American students. So to have this many years go by and to see the needle remain the same is really hard. So I'm going to hang my hat on the dashboard and say that we really have to monitor what we're doing and what impact it's having and stop doing things that aren't working. And we've been saying for years that our math isn't working. And it's not working all the way through from elementary up. At some point in time, we have to stop doing what's not working and stop layering interventions on things that aren't working. So I, I guess what I, what I'm going to ask is how, and it kind of goes, I think, to the engagement question that Vice President Brown asked and that we're talking about is we have some pretty active, you know, parent engagement opportunities now. How do we make sure that all of the various efforts that are happening are woven together and not siloed? So, you know, Mr. Gwen, you talked about the, the new things that are, you know, the RT Fisher second year, the college bound, the young gifted and black. We also have other programs that we've layered on for the last 10 years. So what are we doing to weave the fabric? I'm going to make a really bad, a really bad metaphors, but I want to wrap our OMs around these kids that we've been, are these communities, our communities that we've been saying are struggling year after year. And, and weave together our, our solutions versus layering on more. So, you know, I think our PAC, you know, how do we frame our committee discussions to really get good, good authentic feedback from our engaged families to inform us on what they know is and isn't working? So I think that's kind of my overall comment, because I think we've got a lot going for us. But I think as long as we look at things kind of in that deficit model of what interventions versus what do we need to lift up? What do we need to accelerate? What do we need to see of the strengths of our kids? We're going to keep spinning and I just, you know, I'm not, I don't have the answers and I don't expect you to. I also really want to appreciate all the work that's being done in COVID. You know, it's like we're, you know, do all this stuff. Oh, and by the way, there's a pandemic. But at the same time, it's our African American and we'll hear later our Latinx kids that are the ones that need the most support during this time. So that, that's, that's my comment. I apologize. But, and then Kamara, I'm curious in the sense of EMOJA. I have a vague recollection and I could be wrong, that we talked last year about expanding EMOJA to the other middle schools. And I'm not sure if that got adjusted, changed, or just kind of status of, are we still looking at that as an option?
Additionally, Director Vasudev's questions were not answered. So if you all could answer them as well as Director Sinai's.
The, the last update regarding the expansion to EMOJA, I believe, was that we were going to come back this year and look for the work with RT Fisher in the framework. And then thinking about in the next year, after this year, thinking about putting budgetary line items to maybe expanding it for next school year. So Superintendent can maybe correct me, but I think that that was the last that I've kind of heard about it.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, Mr. Gwen. I appreciate that, that we had not, with each expansion into another middle school, we'll need to find both the salary for the teacher and potentially some, some additional support for that program. And we did not have those budget discussions in the spring and had thought that this will be the year in which we're sort of consolidating curriculum and beginning to think about those expansion opportunities for 2023.
And I, I kind of lost track of Director Vasudev's questions, but hopefully, Mr. Aurelio.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, I wasn't, I, I got more comment than questions. I wasn't sure.
So my question was, has there been a survey? Thank you, Vice President Brown. You know, questions around truancy, like, do we know what's contributing to that truancy rate? And why it's getting worse? Like, has there been a survey? And are we planning to survey the parents in the EMOJA program? And as part of the middle school assignment too, our black families, you know, as to what the kind of programming they want to see in all of our middle schools.
I would say there hasn't been an attendance based survey at this point. It is early to, it's just a quick one month snapshot. And I would say, I don't, I don't want to speak for Director Brown, Steel Brown, but I, I believe that we didn't sift through that attendance data and say pull out any modify or any quarantine or any of those other pieces that might be there as well. That could give us additional information around that first month of school. So that might be some other factors that play into it as well. I don't know if you have anything to add about that data specifically.
Well, I would, I would just say that the, I think the first month's worth of data is probably not as solid as it could be just because it took people a while to get used to taking attendance. We were using Infinite Campus for the first time to take attendance. So I suspect what we'll see, you know, when we have the full months of September and October is, is a more consistent attendance trend. I think the data might be slightly shaky just because it's the start of school and because there's, with that new student information system. I know that some teachers were struggling to take regular attendance the first couple of weeks of school. So I think it'll settle and we can dig into it more deeply as we go.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, but since you brought it up, if there is a correlation of African American students being absent more because of modified quarantine or exposures or COVID, I do want to know that. That's, that's really important information. As we have like a targeted public health campaign or something for African American families. Correct.
Okay, Director Muscarini Swann, and I just want to remind everybody we've got two more important, this is, you know, other important discussions to go. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask what, um, you're, what is happening around hiring? Because I'm sure a lot of people or members of the board have heard how the hiring this year was lacking a lot around like, I think there was a lot of issues around HR and hiring and inclusivity around that. And I think that, I know at Berkeley High, as far as I know, I don't believe there are any black math teachers in the department, which I think is a pretty clear issue when we're looking at the, like, fail rates for black students in our schools, especially in our high schools. And I'm wondering what is being done to address that, especially in light of the BSEP budget cuts.
I see that Assistant Vice Espinoza appeared as well. I definitely know that we call for targeted hiring practices that I will let her speak to any specifics.
Um, so this year was a bizarre year. We hired actually 124 new teachers, which was larger than we've ever done in recent history since at least 2012. Our average has been about 87, if you exclude this year. The year before last was only 53. So it was a large group. We actually did hire quite a diverse group. I'm sorry that the math department doesn't reflect that at Berkeley High. But that's something that we're bringing a report on next meeting. And I will bring more information to the next meeting.
Okay, great. Yeah, I look forward to hearing more.
For, for what it's worth, I think there are a number of actually black math teachers at the high school. Someone is texting me about that. I think there's three.
I remember last, or my sophomore year, my math teacher was talking to me about how she was one of the only teachers of color in the math department and she's an Asian woman. But.
Yeah, I think that there's, I think my understanding is there's, there's three African American math teachers at the high school, but it doesn't mean the point's not well taken.
Yeah, that's three for 3,000 students.
Yeah. So I just, I want, I'll go to Director Babbitt in a minute. I wanted, the, the, these comments and questions are, are really important and I, and my colleagues have asked some of the ones that I was going to ask. I wanted to bring up or just mention what I, what I usually bring up around when, or I brought the last time we talked about this resolution, which is about discipline, statistics, and we have, you know, now that we're back in school, we will start, I assume, unfortunately, have more discipline, particularly at the high school, but also the middle schools. And we kind of had a break from it when we were in COVID times and we haven't had, as we've talked about, we haven't had expulsions in this district for a number of years, which is a huge accomplishment and, and a real change from the way it was when I first got on the board. So that's something to really be proud of, but our suspension numbers have, and our suspension numbers have also decreased, which is also something to be proud of. But the disproportion, the racial disproportionality in suspensions has always been there. It's, as Director Sinai said, that, that's been, that also has been a constant in this district and a lot of districts, of course, over the years, but it's something that, that I fear we're going to start to see again as students are back on campus and suspensions resume. And so I would love us to keep an eye on, not only keep an eye, but get, but get reports about that and sort of be really intentional about the way that we go about reducing exclusionary discipline altogether and particularly disproportionality. I did want to commend the, the presentations tonight have been really clear and concise. And I really appreciate how you called out Director Steel Brown, the math data in that slide. You know, not, you know, we're not, those numbers, as Director Sinai said, are really stark and upsetting. And, and it's important for us not to shy away from them and to have them called out in a really clear way. And I'm looking forward to what I know will be presentations, particularly around math. As you said, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio and his Vice President Brown and Dr. Stevens and I have talked about having a potentially dedicated study session to, to math in the district, so K-12, so we can see the continuum. So that was a couple of random thoughts and I'll give Director Babbitt, if I could give you the last word maybe, and then we'll move on to the next important item that we have.
Thank you so much and thank you to all of my board colleagues for being so insightful and for all of the comments and for the ways in which we plan to address this data and our needs. Looking forward to that. Last couple of comments was around, just want to make sure that attendance rates, I think they, if you're tardy a certain number of times, does that automatically count as an absent in this chart? Or is this really just didn't show up completely?
I'm going to defer that to Director Steel Brown as far as the data that was pulled.
Can you ask the question again? I didn't hear the beginning.
It, I'm not sure if it's like that now, but it used to be if you were tardy two times or maybe three times, that, that consisted of an automatic absence. And so I'm just wondering, just want to make sure that we highlight how tardies impact our attendance rate when we make the correlation between academic results, you know, and, and just not being in class 100% of the time, right?
We didn't, the, the tardy rate's not included. This is, this is, the, these are kids who've been marked absent from school and were, and missed. I think it was either full days or partial days. It wasn't tardiness. That wasn't factored in. So it was absences.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. And then in the future, if we could also have, when we look at our district enrollment by race, if we could also understand what is our city enrollment by race and demographic? And then what is our inter-district transfer kind of application and acceptance by race as well? Because I would think that would also play a factor into our total population numbers, just who are we saying yes to versus saying no to? And then also want to highlight the multi-ethnic. Thank you for this label, which says that you want to clean it up and that you want to, to give it this tag. As someone who led a black parent group for many years, you know, it's, it's real work when people are of multi-race, but they do identify as black and their, their children experience many of the same things that visibly, you know, African American only children face. So it's very important that we not lose sight of making sure that we serve this group and that we find ways in which we can tangibly identify when you're multi-ethnic, do you want to be included in? tangibly identify when you're multi-ethnic, do you want to be included in what other types of targeted supports? So, thank you.
Thanks, Director Babett. Um, all right. Thank you all very much. And let's move right along to item 12.3, which is a discussion on our 2021 Latinx resolution. And is that Associate Superintendent Aurelio? Is it you as well? Great. Go for it. Thank you.
Yes, it is. And I am sharing my screen. So this might look familiar, same structure as the last presentation. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to provide an update with, uh, two of our, our teammates here, Lisa Stupin and Ruth Steel Brown, regarding the Latinx resolution which passed this past year. I'm gonna let Lisa Stupin take it over and we're gonna move through these slides for you.
Perfect. Um, thank you, everybody, again. So now we're gonna switch over to the Latinx resolution. Um, so just a quick summary, June 2021, the district, um, the school board, um, passed the Latinx resolution in support of the achievement and success of all Latinx students within our district. Um, the resolution was a response, um, to an urgent call by the city and stakeholders in regards to address the large equity gaps. Prior to the writing of the resolution, a 2020 vision report dated back in September of 2018 showed that there was little movement or improvement for Latinx students in eighth grade math achievement and college and career readiness. Next slide, please. And this slide, um, we're going to discuss, um, it depicts the current status of the resolution. So the first one is prioritize Latinx student achievement and opportunity. Um, again, I'm going to go through all of these in a little bit more detail in, um, some preceding slides after this one. And in addition, um, we'll provide more information as well in the Friday updates. But, um, to, to provide, uh, more achievement on this, um, PK, which services are set to begin in January of 2022. Um, the next one is improve Latinx engagement. There's a couple of items in here, PK as well, Latino family literacy, where training is supposed to start in the fall of 2021 and sessions are set to begin in January of 2022. And then work obviously with CABE and the multilingual master plan, which is started, has started and is going to continue through June of 2022. Um, methods in collecting, sharing and analyzing academic achievement data, the Brea Department. Elevation, which is a, which is a, a platform that supports ELL, um, data and information. It's a data merge that's happening now with the district and elevation. The training is going to begin fall 2021 and full implementation, um, to start January, February 2022. Teach and celebrate the diversity of Berkeley's Latinx community. Um, there is information that is currently posted on the district website. Um, in regards to Latin Heritage Month, which is now, um, which is September 15th to October 15th. And I, I do want to mention, I don't know if you all noticed, um, Superintendent Aurelio's background, but that is him and his wife. So just wanted to point that out. And I'm sure he'll talk about it in a minute, but, um, the US of the district and LUB are working together to host a culminating event. When we did post this, um, presentation, um, we were still tentative on the date. We did meet earlier in the week and we have set the date, so that is not current. The actual date is going to be Thursday, October 28th, and the time is going to be from 7:00 to 8:30 PM and more information will come. And the last portion is culturally affirming academic program to address Latinx student achievement and promote college and career readiness. So that would be PK and again, starting in January 2022. Next slide, please.
Ruth is joining us again to talk about the data around Latinx students.
Thank you. So this slide will look familiar. It is basically the same as the one from the prior presentation, but the additional component of this one is the Latinx English language learners. So that line has been added. So, um, this one again is looking at district enrollment by race. And you can see those same trends I spoke to earlier with our Asian student enrollment going up slightly in elementary. And for black students, it went down slightly. So our Latinx population as a whole is pretty consistent across elementary and middle and high school, but you will definitely notice there is a much larger English language learner population in elementary school for our Latinx EL students considerably larger than at middle and high schools. That's one of those data points that stands out with that group of English language learners. So it'd be interesting to find out more about those patterns and trends and why that's occurring. So that's the one piece I wanted to highlight on that slide. Um, in, in addition to that, um, as you can see at the bottom, we do also want to break down that multi-ethnic data, so we can look more closely at which students have, you know, are black or Latino within that group, because right now we're having a really hard time pulling that data out and disaggregating because it's, um, a pretty large percentage of our student enrollment, but we, we need to figure out how to get that out of Infinite Campus and, and pull that data so we can look at it more closely, because there will be students within that group who identify as black or Latinx. And right now, we're not able to align them with the other subgroups properly. So that's a work in progress. Next slide, please. So this slide speaks to, um, language acquisition for Latinx students. And there are some interesting patterns on here, which I might write down to make sure I, I capture them properly. So one of the things that stood out, um, particularly is that we have a pretty large percentage of, um, English only speaking students within this population, over 50%, especially in elementary school. So a large percentage of this group speak English, um, as their primary language or only, as their only language. But if you look at the elementary rates, there are more students in elementary school who are English language learners within this population, which stands out. And then if you look at the number of students who are re-designated, you see a much higher percentage in high school, which you would expect as they become more proficient in English. So there are a couple of places where we see more English language learners in elementary and then more students being re-designated in high school. So again, this, it would be interesting to tie this data to math performance and reading levels, because reading levels also drive math performance. The two are inextricably linked. So there are definitely some places within these data points where we can dig a little deeper and try to connect some of these students who, um, struggling to learn English, with math proficiency and, you know, passing classes at different grade levels. And actually to go off on the tangent for a second, we've already been pulling a lot of that data for the CCS plan. And we're already starting to see clusters of kids who miss school, who have low reading scores, have low math scores and so on. So we've already started trying to, um, tie some of those threads together to really identify which groups of our students have multiple challenges in terms of being successful in school. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the math slide again. And as Ruben explained, because math one is really the gatekeeper for high school, that was the purpose in focusing on this. And actually, um, I need to spend some time figuring out exactly how the math patterns are, uh, happening at the high school, because I believe that if students fail math one, they repeat math one, they don't get to move on to math two. I'm not 100% sure about that. So there's a knock on effect. If students actually fail that math class as freshmen, it then limits their opportunities to take different classes as a sophomore and they get stuck in that math class again. So, um, I've been meeting with the high school and actually, um, Sean and I are gonna be working with the high school on some of the math issues as well. Um, so that will be some of the information that we start gathering in terms of some of those math practices that are occurring, especially in, in ninth grade. You can see on this slide that, um, after the, uh, black students, the Latinx students have the highest rate of Ds and Fs within the math program. And the English language learner students within that subgroup have a higher failure rate than their English speaking counterparts. So there are clearly some barriers occurring to the math curriculum if students are learning English. So that's the main point on this one. The rest of the data is the same. But you can see, I think, as was highlighted previously, that for those two particular subgroups, our black students and our Latinx students, there's a lot of work to be done. And as was pointed out, it's tied to attendance, it's tied to engagement, it's tied to relevant curriculum. Um, it's tied to the relationships teachers have with their kids and how the kids actually feel about learning math. So, um, there are a lot of layers to that particular puzzle, which I'm hopeful we'll be able to start peeling back and addressing. Next slide, please. Although I think I might be done. Oh, this is attendance rates. Um, so again, same slide, there's an additional line on this slide in terms of the Latinx English language learners. What stands out here is how the attendance rate for that particular group decreases across the grade levels. Similarly to the attendance rate for our black students, where there's definitely a decline. As students go through the higher grade levels, some of the other grade levels, it's pretty flat or actually improves in high school. But for those two groups, it definitely dwindles as kids get into high school. And again, there's lots of different reasons for that, but it clearly is the worst time for students to attend less school, because those, those grades and the, the coursework are so critical. So, um, I know Dr. Shelley has been doing a lot of work with the SAB and SAT processes in terms of providing support to all students who are struggling with attendance. So I would imagine at some point, there may be some updates about that, but I know that that's something he's focusing on. So there are a lot of, um, things in process to try and support our kids and families who struggle to get their students to school. Because of course, in elementary school, it's a reflection of parent action, because they have to physically get their children to school. In middle and high school, it's more about kids' engagement. So there are different reasons why you see different levels of attendance at different grade levels. And that concludes my part of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so I am going to talk about the targeted interventions, um, for Latinx students. So you can see on the top of the, they are the partners. I'm just gonna kind of go down and give you a brief summary. Um, so CABE, we are doing the work for the, um, multilingual master plan. The end outcome or the end product for this, with this partner is the updated, um, multilingual master plan. So services for students would mean that this updated plan would provide, you know, more services, updated services and pathways to support them academically. Services for parents, there's a couple of things in there. Um, you know, parents are going to be on the, um, leadership, can, are able to be on the leadership team as well as there is also a parent portion that CABE is implementing. Um, and that's, you know, 20 to 30 participants in there. And then on top of that, provide feedback through surveys and interviews. For staff, there's PD, there's participation in the leadership team, um, as well as providing, again, feedback through surveys and interviews. Um, moving to the next one, PK, which is Parent Institute for Quality Education. For students, you know, the goal here is to have increased parent involvement, um, within their academic, within their academic activities. Services for parents, so this is a family-centered engagement, um, program. And so basically, parents are provided eight-week sessions, one session a week for 75 minutes. And for PK, we're going to be, um, covering four, two elementary school sites, a middle school and a high school. And then for staff, it is, again, it is going to be, um, engaged families, which would then hopefully equivalent to, um, added supports for their students' academics. Latino family literacy, um, for students, more support at home in regards to language arts and vocabulary, reading skills. For parents, it is, um, they are 10-week sessions, one session a week for two hours. They're going to be held at whatever site, um, has trained people, trained staff members in there, on, on the staff. And then they'll provide families on how to get more involved with their students', um, language arts. And then for staff, same thing, they're going to receive, um, cultural framework, they're going to receive professional development. And also they will be receiving a good, um, part of this, um, partner is that, um, staff will receive up to 180 books of a lending library. That's culturally responsive text. Um, Fuente, um, as you can see, 2122 is in a planning year right now for all areas. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is elevation. And what elevation is, is a database to better support our English learners. So for students and for staff and for parents, it's basically a place where, um, EL, it's like a, a database for ELL students where, um, you know, compliance can be held all in there. It's easy to find data for our English learners. Our parents have been asking for that as well as staff for, um, you know, data in regards to English language learners and as well as being compliant. So it's a database that also houses compliant CDE-approved notifications that we have to provide our families of our English learners.
Can I add just, I know that elevation also meets some of our FPM requirements as well, in making sure that we're meeting all those requirements.
Can you just say what FPM is?
Uh, federal program monitoring. It's a monitoring process around our English learners and ensuring that we're, we're providing all the services they need. And also just to add, I know this is a, a question brought up by, uh, public comment that PK, for example, Latino family literacy, that all of these programs are going to be either provided in Spanish for Spanish family members and/or bilingual, um, in motion Spanish.
And I also, thank you for that. I also want to add that all of these programs are housed in my world, which is the categorical and special projects department. Next slide, thank you. So, um, kind of the timeline, um, August to December, which is a pretty big, big timeline. In regards to CABE, it's the launching, it's the planning, it's the solicitation of members, it's getting parents to, um, want, who want to participate in the parent cohort, analyzing data and then also, um, providing a board update in regards to CABE. From January to June, um, the draft of the multilingual plan, um, will be provided stakeholders to provide, um, to ask for feedback. And then the finalized draft will be presented to the school board. And then, um, in addition, the, the parent cohorts are going on through August, well, through October, all the way through June of 2022. In regards to PK, like I said previously, um, from, from the first, the first cohort group that's going to occur is one elementary school site and one high school site. And then in the springtime, it'll be, um, an elementary school site and a middle school site. Did you want to add something?
Uh, yeah, I just want to clarify, it's, it's not an elementary school site.
Oh, sorry.
It's elementary level that'll be open to all, all our elementary school sites. We'll be pulling from all school sites. That's why I clarify that.
Yes, sorry. It's gonna be housed at a site, but anyone, yes, I'm sorry, should have clarified. Latino family literacy, um, and I, I will have to add, this is a program that's very close to my heart. And so, um, basically, we're soliciting staff, even if there was that, there has been staff that has been previously, um, trained, um, to, um, teach Latino family literacy to our families. But with things being updated, um, they do need to be trained again. Once we have staff that's trained and the program can be delivered at any site. And again, even if it's at a school site, it would be open to whoever would like to attend. Um, and then this, um, January through June, so training is now, and then sessions would begin, um, in January. Fuente, again, planning year. And then for elevation, right now is the implementation and professional development of staff is going to occur between now and December and the data merge, like I talked about previously. And then from January to June is the full implementation, where we should be able to have EL data in this platform for our English learners. Next slide. And that's all. Thank you.
That's our presentation. We're here for questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, um, Director Basadov.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the staff, um, for this presentation and also for just your authentic engagement with all the different community groups about these different interventions. And, you know, I don't know, my board colleagues might not know this, but Ruben and Lisa have done such a great job just, you know, engaging with the community about, you know, these different programs, metrics, how they're going to roll out. I'm kind of behind the scenes. So, um, thank you so much for, for that work. Uh, I think, uh, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, you answered my first question, which is why is PK only going to a limited number of sites? And I'm glad that you clarified it's district-wide, because that is the issue that a lot of next families have been saying, you know, for the last year, as we want district-wide parent engagement in Spanish. And so I'm really excited for this new partnership and I'm just excited to see it kind of roll out. Cause I know that there's many families that want to be plugged into the education of their children. And, you know, have felt that, that our district hasn't always, you know, facilitated that conversation in a culturally responsive way. So I'm really excited about that partnership. My, um, question is just more on metrics. What I'd like to see, um, you know, I think there's a lot of overlap between both, uh, you know, our BLM like resolution update and our Latinx resolution update, like things like dashboarding, right? And regular reporting, like how that needs to be part of our DNA as a district for all our vulnerable populations, our Latinx students, our black students, our students with disabilities. So I'd love to know, you know, when we can expect a dashboard that is bilingual and reported out to the community and have that conversation? Like, when in the year can we have that conversation? Cause I think it's so important. And I think families want to understand, um, you know, how, how we're really having measurable outcomes from all these different interventions. And then I would love to just know with more specificity, and if you don't have these questions now, I totally understand. But, you know, when we roll out PK, how many, you know, what's the, how many families can participate total in this program for Latino literacy? How many families will benefit from this program? Just having more specific metrics. And then around elevation, I don't know much about it, but I know that when we train our families with new technology, and particularly our English language learners, that it's important that, that, you know, that the onboarding of the families be pretty seamless too. And so I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to learn about any culturally responsive, um, you know, tech support that we plan on giving our families as this new system kind of rolls out um, in Arabic and in Spanish and all of the, the diverse languages of our district, right? Let me see, what else? And math for EL students, math performance for EL students. And I think some of my concerns around truancy that were true for, for African American learners are the same for our Latinx EL students. Like, what's leading to those truancy numbers? Um, you know, what can we do? What kind of specific math interventions can we have for our Latinx EL students that can change these numbers around, right? And maybe Director Sinai, I see your, hurry, your hands raised and. And maybe Director Sinai, see your hands raised and, you know, maybe we've tried a bunch of different things before, but, and, you know, she might have better ideas from the PAC two on what we can do. But but I feel like these numbers are so terrible for our Black students and our Latinx students. And I really want to make sure that, you know, we're evaluating these new partnerships and, you know, what's not working, let's abandon it, and what's working, let's lift it up and let's do more of it, right? I'm concerned at a comment, just like the same comment about Emoja, like, for Puente, it hasn't started yet, but I know there's a lot of interest in it, right? And so as we think about our middle school assignment too, and as we think about starting earlier with these interventions, how are we engaging our Latinx families about programmatic offerings, you know, that can help their students both on an academic level and on a cultural affinity-based level as well? Like, how are we engaging them about these programs? And what they want to see for their children at the middle school age in order to prepare them for high school math? So those are some of my comments. And when we can see more specificity around the number of families that will be engaged and students that will be engaged in each one of these programs, thank you.
Thanks, Director Vasudev. Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, do you have any comments in response?
You hit me with, I think, five questions, so I'm going to try to figure out how five questions. You're right, we can definitely provide more detailed information around the numbers that will be served or the ability to serve X number of families. And that we can make sure that the board gets that information. And all the points you made around attendance and truancy, we need to drill down a little deeper. I don't want to put a date out there or a promise of exactly when a data dashboard will be available because it is a huge undertaking, it is a necessary undertaking. And I'm going to be, on my screen, I'm looking at Ruth because I know it's going to squarely land on her shoulders and her team to really develop and build this. We're obviously in a big transition, technology transition, new student information system that in itself has had its own sort of headaches and hiccups along the road. And that's an impactful thing because we, we're going to need to rely on these data systems. The SIS, which is Student Information System, we still have illuminate as a data warehousing. All those systems have to somehow communicate so we can pull that data out to build out this dashboard. I'm a big believer in having a public-facing dashboard whenever possible that can be sliced every which way you want to slice the data. Different student groups, drill down within student groups, all that information. As long as you're obviously identifying student data, but really public facing. Because I think it allows, it holds us accountable, but it also makes for deeper conversations. So I do believe, my goal is to see that this year. I can't give you a specific of when that will be, the sooner the better, for sure.
And no pressure, the resolution says annual, so.
Information about Elevation?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
So the last slide, the last presentation we did in the last board meeting, we talked about all of those languages that our initial EL students were testing in. So I did bring that up with my last meeting with Elevation and let them know, like, here's an array of languages, what supports we can do. So they actually asked me to provide them data with all the languages. I know the letters can go home in all of these various languages. But, you know, I did let them know that if this is going to be a platform, obviously, that we're adopting and we're providing for our families and our staff, it does need to be multilingual. And so they are aware of that. And so the training, they know that that's something that we are interested in. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Director, Vice President Brown?
Thank you. It's late, it's almost ten o'clock. So I'll try to keep my questions to three instead of six or five, like I normally ask. But thank you again for this presentation, I really appreciate it. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. The first is around our ELL students and Director Still Brown pointed out the larger number of our ELL students in elementary. And I wanted to take some time to talk about reclassification of our students, the update on reclassifications that is happening at our school sites. And then I also wanted to take the time to ask a question around our RFEP monitoring, which is basically just like our responsibility to monitor our students for four years after they've been reclassified, which hasn't been addressed. And then the last one, so I said three, that was one, two. And then the last question, in our Black, in our Latinx resolution, there was an importance to answer about college and career readiness, right? And when we would look at our California dashboard data from twenty nineteen, because twenty-twenty it was, we didn't have that data. But when we look at it for twenty nineteen, our Latinx students, specifically rather, our English language learners are in the orange for college and career readiness. And so I didn't see it addressed in tonight's presentation. But I think that's something that's an important part of the resolution. It was put there based off of the data that we are seeing district-wide and on the California dashboard. And so I was wondering if you could take the opportunity to address that as well.
Can I just jump in? Okay, some of this stuff I do know really well. The Fluent English Proficient Monitoring, that used to occur after the Elevation platform actually helps address that need because that day, the students don't drop off once they reclassify, they actually stay within the system. It's part of the monitoring system of that data. So that's going to be a tremendous lift off of our plates to have that system in place. And then Lisa, do you want to talk about the reclassification and sort of update on that? Because I know that's something we've been talking about.
Sure. So, excuse me, as you all know, going into the pandemic at the end, when we do, we usually districts are required to do the summative assessment, which really pushes a high bulk of our students to be reclassified. Because of the pandemic, many of our students weren't tested because the only option to test was virtually, which was very difficult, especially for our little babies, you know, because everything was online. And so as a result, the state is aware of that. And so our reclassification rates are not where they need to be because we do not have these scores that are current. We do have students that were able to reclassify once this initial testing is done, you know, meaning that, not the initial, I'm sorry, meaning now that we can, if there's some kind of baseline data that we can utilize, because obviously there's four ways that we can reclassify students. And now we have some data that we can use. And what we have been told with guidance from CDE is we can use our most recent LPAC score, which, you know, some of the kids may have scored the four. And so that's what we're utilizing right now without a current, which may mean that, you know, teachers are going to see that that LPAC score may have come from twenty nineteen or something of that nature. That's where we're at right now.
Okay. Additionally, are there, is there still an opportunity to do teacher recommendations as well as assessment, looking at other assessments as criteria for a reclassification as well?
There is, but there has to be, you have to meet all four requirements in order to be classified.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the last one around college and career.
And the college and career specifically, I know we didn't address it, we didn't call it out. And I know, you know, you mentioned the ELL and I wanted to remember that our ELL group for this district is more than just the Latinx group, right? The ELL is, there's, it's a bigger, it's a larger group than just Latinx EL. But it's definitely something we can come back with in a subsequent, you know, if we do a college and career update, let's say, and we can specifically call that out, I think that would be great to do.
All right, Director Sinai.
Thank you. And not only thank you for the presentation, but thank you for the phenomenal amount of work that you all not just did to present the presentations tonight, but just in general. I know you all are really working, you know, nonstop to meet the needs of our kids. And I really want to appreciate it because I'm just, I'm exhausted just listening. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm going to ask, my questions are around the family engagement piece. And particularly around the PK and the Family Literacy Program. You know, my constant refrain, those of you who are new will know, is like silo, silo, silo. You know, how do we make sure that we're leveraging our resources and not, you know, crashing into each other? And so when I look at the family engagement of PK and the Family Literacy, the Latino Literacy Project, I'm curious to know what's the difference? How will they work together and what the role of OFI is? Because I heard you say, Lisa, that it's going to sit with you. This to me is, it's critical that OFI be engaged in this. So I'm just curious, you might not have the answers to it all, it might be comeback. But I, you know, I'm concerned that if you're trying to recruit parent leaders in every school for multiple things, there's like only so much people can do. So how are we going to work with the sites to identify which families are best fit for which programs? And how is the ownership and engagement of the site leadership going to be involved in that process?
Sure. So I can, I can talk a little bit about it. So I will, I would like to provide more information at a later date, if that's okay. What I, what I do know, like, for example, family, Latino Family Literacy right now is geared for elementary families. And so it is an elementary program where the parents are engaged in a matter of, basically, there's an end outcome, there's an end product. They create a family book, which, you know, really piques their interest and they share it. And so that's where that, that is, you know, at. And then the PK honestly is more, yes, we're providing across the district, but it's different content areas, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And so I know what I've started to do is actually, you know, talk to some principals and ask for names of families that they know would be interested or are in need of additional support. That's not where, you know, that's, that's not where we're going. Obviously, we do need to work with that, the other office of family engagement. We are waiting for, you know, a new person to come aboard soon so we can have a little bit more leadership of a leadership role in there. But obviously, we have to work in conjunction. What I mean by these programs being housed with me, yes, they're housed with me, but we also have to work together with other district departments, and that would be one for sure. Because as you can see with the interventions, it is heavily based with family engagement and family support that we're trying to provide our families. So it is in conjunction, not just a silo at the district office as well in my world. But we really, I know that we really need to work with sites and principals and other staff members like teachers that know and work one-on-one with their students, who really needs the additional support. So it's going to be a team effort and figuring out who we can provide support to and who really needs them, so.
And I guess the other component is, I mean, keeping families engaged in these kinds of activities isn't a heavy lift. You know, because you really want, you don't want to just like, you know, spit in the dark and hope that they like succeed. And so I guess the question is, if there's a site person, whether it's an OFI person or an RTI person or a principal person, who is actually paying attention to the families that are engaged in these different activities and figuring out what support so that they succeed in them? I just, how many things go on at one time is just a question of how we balance that out. And you've got a million other responsibilities as well. So, you know, I just, I want to be, I want to be observant and conscious about what it takes to do this successfully.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right, Director Babbin, I think, is next? Okay. You're muted.
Thank you so much and thank you all for your hard work. Thank you to my colleague, Director Vasudev, for all the work you've done behind the scenes, supporting them, all the community liaison with Latinos United States Berkeley to really bring these initiatives forward, which reflect the voice of the community. So definitely want to appreciate all of that hard work. My comments relate to three areas. First, I'm hearing a lot about, I'm totally appreciative of dashboards and assessments and robust data packages. But I'd really like for the district to also be mindful of how they're going to inform instruction, right? Because we've gotten data for years, we can almost tell you what the data will look like before you put it up, right? But, and I think to Director Sinai's point earlier is, how are we going to use this data to inform assessments and inform instructional, first-level instruction too, by the way? Like, how are we going to improve what we're doing in the first level of teaching and learning? And I know that Director Brown has, you know, through the things that they use in her school, some really informative tools. And I hope that we would be more open to seeing how we can integrate some of those techniques and tools because we really need to do something profoundly different to improve these results. And I'm not seeing much, you know, profound change, although I am seeing some great added supplements for both of these groups. So I just don't want to leave the need to drive first-level instruction improvement out. Also want to thank Director Brown for mentioning the redesignation of our students because I know that our D-LAC and our PAC committees for, for those advocates have long been saying that, you know, we stop once they get redesignated. They lose a lot of the supports that they still need. So definitely want to make sure that that doesn't happen. And also wanted to talk, as we talk about middle school enrollment, and we bring that up to really just say that I was reminded of how many of our families, especially our English language learner families, have such a, or not that they're learners, but their parents have such a hard time with the enrollment process itself. And really want to highlight how many of our students are entering school a week, two weeks late just because there wasn't a paper taken from a district office to a school site, right? So ways in which we can improve the efficiency of those policies or practices, really want to make that a highlight of something that we can also achieve because, you know, we talk about welcoming schools environments, but when I can't even get in for two weeks, right? When I have to start off, I can't even figure out how many forms I have to fill out or now I need another one, right? And I have to go to all these different people to translate for me. That's, that's not the best way to say that we really want an inclusive community while we strive for a diverse community. So those would be my comments there. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Babbin. All right, Director Vasudev with the last comments on this?
Super brief comment, again, just wanted to thank the staff for the great presentation. And I just wanted to look up something that Director Sinai said and really appreciate also Director Babbin's comments about how is this going to lead to transformative change in the classroom? I think, you know, and really appreciate Vice President Brown, your practical experience as an educator working specifically with English language learners is really valuable. So, you know, it is a lot more work than just your regular, you know, work, you know, Ms. Stupin. So I really want us to think, you know, we funded forty percent of a counselor for the Puente program, right, that hasn't launched. But I do want us to think as food for thought, now as a board, to be a little bolder and to acknowledge, right? The breadth of this work, the fact that someone has to be finding these families, right? Like monitoring the progress, making sure that these are the right interventions for their children. And to think about in the future, having a full-time position dedicated to serving twenty-two to twenty-three percent of our students. That's almost one in four of our students, it's Latinx, right? And so figuring out a way to have the right staffing to help match the students and their families to the services they need to be successful in our schools is something that we really need to think about as a long-term investment and be a little bit more intentional about and bolder about as a board. So thank you so much. And other districts have done this. Oakland has an awesome equity office with staff for all the different various targeted groups that they're trying to support and making sure that they're closing the achievement gap for those groups. And so I want us to look at other districts that are doing this better than we are and make sure that, you know, we're trying to get there, that we're taking our district to the next level and really advocating for our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Vasudev. And thank you for all your leadership as well. And with that, we will, we will move on to our last discussion item of the night. Thank you all. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm going to move us along to item twelve point four. Excuse me. So this is the discussion of a possible vaccination policy for students. I'm going to say a few words for a few minutes actually to frame this discussion. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stevens to do a very brief presentation of the actual proposed policy and some data. Then I'll ask my colleague, Director Vasudev, if she has any comments to add as the other member of the policy subcommittee, and then we'll open it up for discussion. This is just here for discussion. In terms of process, as I think a few people said earlier in the night, we had one policy subcommittee meeting about a month or so ago to discuss a possible student vaccination policy. When it came to the board for a full board discussion, we had a discussion about the policy just related to student athletes. Then we had another policy subcommittee meeting where we discussed the proposed policy that we're going to discuss tonight. And then we brought it to the board for a full board discussion tonight. And if the, if it's the will of the board to pursue this, then this will be considered the first reading. We can go back to the policy committee meeting to make any adjustments, to the policy committee to make any adjustments, and then bring it back for approval at the next meeting. To give a little bit of framing about what we're, what our thinking was and- and the thinking of the community members who participated in these discussions. The overall, if we're going to impose any kind of vaccine mandate on our students, we wanted to make sure that whatever we do is equitable, it's workable, it's legal, and ultimately that it serves what I think are the two twin goals that we have here, which is, one, get more members of our community vaccinated, including young people, and keeps students in school. I want to say we're really fortunate, we're lucky to have Director Vasudev on the board and on the policy subcommittee, as her professional work in this area has really proven to be invaluable, as we've wrestled with how to do this in a way that meets those goals. And Dr. Stevens mentioned this, but at the policy committee level, we've had really rich discussions that have benefited from the participation of many members of the community, including the leadership of our teachers' union, our classified staff union, many members of our high school teaching staff and administration of the high school, parents. And then I think it was Director Sainai who thanked, or maybe it was Director Babbitt, thanked the youth commission's engagement with this topic. And we appreciate their letter to us and their discussion about this. As always, I just want to thank Trish McDermott's work on so many aspects of our response to COVID, including her judgment and advice about this proposed policy. We considered how a number of other districts are approaching this. And as you all probably know, there are a number of other districts that are kind of right in the middle, trying to figure out what, if anything, to do around student vaccines. I personally think we've hit on the right balance, and I want to say a few words about it. And then I really look forward to hearing what you all think. We've gotten a lot of comments tonight from sort of all sides, from people saying, you need to do a full mandate with no exceptions, where you either get vaccinated or you can't come to school. And then we've had people say that, you know, we have no right to tell students that they have to get vaccinated at all. This proposed policy, as Dr. Stevens mentioned earlier, sort of threads that needle. I think it's really important to keep in mind that we're not like a restaurant where we can just not let you in if you refuse to get vaccinated. McDonald's has no obligation to serve every resident in Berkeley. We have an obligation to educate Berkeley students. And until the state says that the COVID vaccine is one of the vaccines that all students in the state must get to attend school, we can't, even if we wanted to, which I don't believe we do, but we can't, even if we wanted to, just kick students out of school who won't get the vaccine. And while we can offer independent study, we can't force students into independent study. We can't, and in any event, we don't have the staffing capacity or the resources to build out a much larger independent study program or distance learning. So, and for a variety of reasons, as we're about to see, there are really stark racial disparities in vaccine rates for our students, meaning that any forced exclusion from school of kids who are not vaccinated would have a really starkly disproportionate racial impact. Finally, it's also true that the vaccine is still only approved under emergency use for ages twelve to fifteen. And although state public health officials vocally strongly supported students getting vaccinated, they have not mandated vaccines for any students. So all that is to say, we need a middle ground. And our goals are to get more children vaccinated. For the safety of everyone in the community, this is critical, and to keep kids in school. So what this policy does, strikes that middle ground. You either need to get vaccinated or you need to test weekly. And there's medical and religious exemptions as well. We know that testing is not a perfect substitute for vaccination. We do know that, but it helps. And it may also create incentives to just go ahead and get vaccinated. And then also in this policy, for the things that we can mandate above and beyond the core school day, like sports and prom and attending indoor sports, the proposal is to mandate vaccines without a testing option. We've also carefully considered timing. We were proposing implementation date of the first day of school in January. To be fair to all families, give everyone an opportunity to comply. Since I think that everyone agrees we want to get as many people vaccinated as possible, I'm also really pleased to report that the city is a very willing partner in this work. I spoke with Mayor Argeen this week, and he pledged the city's support for a campaign to educate youth in Berkeley about the vaccine, to identify trusted voices, to think about incentives that we can provide, to take advantage of the emerging research about vaccine hesitancy among some people and among some age groups. And our staff, and I want to thank Dr. Stevens for his leadership here, they've invested a lot of time in our technical ability to track vaccination data much more robustly than other districts have done. And this will help us as we implement this policy if it's approved. And of course, information for families about how to comply with the policy will be developed and translated once it's approved, if that's the will of the board. Last thing, at the end of the day, our staff, city staff, and our community partners working together, that's what it'll take to get vaccine rates where we want them to be and where they need to be. This policy is just one piece of that overall effort. And I'm really looking forward to hearing what my colleagues think about it as we have the discussion. So that's the sort of framing preamble. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Stevens now, and then Director Vasudev, and then we'll open it up.
Great. Thanks very much, President Alper. So what I'm going to do is just a very brief review of the current draft policy. I'll just read it aloud, and I'm doing that really so that members who are still, members of the community who are still watching our meeting, are aware of the various elements of this draft policy. It's a little bit different than approaches being taken in other districts. I'll also share some aggregated data about some vaccine rates here in Berkeley Unified. About five minutes of presentation, and then I'll turn it back over to the board for discussion. Let me share my screen very quickly. So what I'll do is just review the elements of this draft policy. Again, President Alper did a very good job, I thought, laying out the process by which this policy was created. And at risk of just, so taking a bit of time, I'll read it aloud. So the current draft policy reads in this way. Now that by January third of 2022, all U.S. students aged twelve or older, other than those at BAS, Berkeley Adult School, shall be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 unless the student has a documented medical or religious exemption. Students who are not fully vaccinated by that date shall be required to submit to weekly onsite COVID testing. By the third of January of next year, all students aged sixteen or over who participate at Berkeley High School as athletes shall be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 in order to be eligible to participate in the sport, unless the student has a documented medical or religious exemption. In this particular case, there shall be no option for weekly testing as a substitute for vaccination in order to participate in athletics. The draft policy has several other stipulations. District staff shall develop a list of optional extracurricular activities, such as prom, for which full vaccination will be required as a condition of in-person participation effective third of January 2022. Proof of vaccination shall be required for attendance for any person aged twelve or over at any indoor Berkeley High School athletic event. Also, on the third of January, all Berkeley Adult School students shall be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 unless the student has a documented medical or religious exemption as a condition of attending school in person. There shall be no option for weekly testing as a substitute for vaccination in order to attend Berkeley Adult School in person. No student shall be deemed ineligible for any activity due to lack of access to the vaccine. A student is fully vaccinated if two weeks have elapsed since their second dose of the vaccine, and the district shall develop procedures for evaluating medical or religious exemptions. So that is the full body of the draft policy under consideration. And then just as a look at vaccination rates and numbers here in Berkeley Unified, this is a look as of last week, the date of the posting of this particular agenda item, of the numbers of unvaccinated and vaccinated students, both in our high school and middle school. So you can see at Berkeley High School and BTA combined, the number of unvaccinated and vaccinated students. And then looking at our middle school here, we should note that we're looking predominantly at grade seven and eight. We're excluding sixth grade. You can see there the number of students who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. And then we are able to pull apart our vaccination data here in Berkeley Unified. This was a result of actually a fairly extensive data entry operation that we completed not too long ago, but that an hour, it required dozens of hours of staff time to complete. Here, you're able to see disaggregated data for all of our high school students. So this includes both BTEC and Berkeley High. And you can see some of the disparities that President Alper was describing in his remarks. And if we look in at middle school, again, we can see some of the same disparities by demographic group, again, looking specifically at students who are eligible to be vaccinated. That's twelve and older, and predominantly includes grade seven and grade eight in our three middle schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the board for discussion.
Thanks, Dr. Stevens. And Director Vasudev, I wanted to ask, give you an opportunity to speak first since you were intimately involved in the development of this.
Yeah, no, I think you covered everything, President Alper. I just, you know, wanted to reiterate for the rest of our colleagues that we engaged many educators around this issue. You know, we engaged our labor partners that, you know, we looked at what other districts were doing. I personally reached out to other colleagues in other districts that were passing mandates to talk about, you know, some of the issues that they were seeing as potential challenges. And that this is, again, an example where districts are being left on, you know, on our own to figure out these very complicated public health decisions. I think it's really wonderful what President Alper just said about his conversation with our mayor, that we have our own public health department, and then we can partner on a targeted public health campaign, like many other districts can't, right? And I think one of the things that would make this really powerful if we move this discussion forward is having a targeted campaign led by our youth. I think it's really great that our youth commission in Berkeley is showing up, giving public comment in support of a mandate. They've actually been watching this issue closely for several weeks. And so, you know, they didn't just come today. They've been communicating with the policy committee for several weeks about this issue. And I think it's really important that this is an opportunity for us as a board to, you know, reach across the aisle, to work with our youth commission, to work with our high school student leaders, to work with, you know, our public health department in a youth-led campaign to support vaccination mandates. I think, you know, in terms of, yes, there is. And if you look at the demographic data, you're going to see higher percentages of African-American students, Latinx students, indigenous students that are not vaccinated, right? But I view that as an opportunity for a public health campaign. And I think it's really important that we acknowledge that it has been our Black community, our Latinx community, and our indigenous community that has, you know, been hit hardest by COVID-19 deaths, right? And so I want to make sure that that's also part of our equity discussion too, like what's happening. And I know that as a district, we've tried to have conversations, you know, with UCSF to our targeted populations. And I think it's something that we need to continue to do in the fall. And that's part of the reason why we have such a long, you know, window before this goes into effect, should this move forward. And so I look forward to the discussion, you know, we've been, I've only heard from the policy subcommittee, right, and the members that came to that and our youth commission, so I'm excited to hear from my colleagues tonight.
Director Vasudev. So let's open it up for, again, what is just a discussion, although I guess just to frame that too, we'd like some direction, you know, from our colleagues about, you know, whether to keep it as is, completely change it, scrap it altogether, what any thoughts you have. So let's hear what you think. Who wants to go?
I'll go.
Director Babbitt, thank you.
So I definitely appreciate a targeted health campaign to help people make these decisions around getting vaccinated. I really appreciate the way that you framed it, President Alper, around having a middle ground with getting vaccinated or testing weekly. I think we lose that middle ground completely when we start mandating it for our athletes and for other activities. And I appreciate all the conversations that you all have had. And I just want to acknowledge that they've been with educators. And I'm not a medical expert, and many of our educators are not medical experts also. And so for that reason, I fully support, you know, vaccinating or testing. And I want to acknowledge that the vaccination is awesome in keeping our hospitalization rates down and keeping people who are infected, you know, having less impact, but they don't actually stop the spread. And I know a lot of people believe that they don't, they stop the spread. And the bottom line is, like, I still need for people to wear masks so they don't actually get COVID, whether they're vaccinated or not. And I think part of everybody being vaccinated leads people to believe that now you are safer from catching the virus. And you're literally not, right? So I, and again, that's the information that I've been told. I'm no medical expert either to even really say that that's true or not. But I do know that many vaccinated people have gotten COVID-19 or the Delta variant, right? The data proves that. So I, again, would say my direction would be, yes, let's full-on support a targeted health campaign. I'm all for vaccinated or test weekly. And I think that's as far as I'm willing to go. And I really would like to just acknowledge more about our actual liability of making this mandate, given the actual authority that we have in this scope of the law, and that we will be subjecting ourselves to lawsuits.
Thanks, Director Babbitt. Director Babbitt, can I just ask you, and for everybody too, we didn't really spend much time on this, but another part of the proposed policy is for the adult school students. The way the policy is written is it does not have the testing option. So the middle ground that we're talking about, or that I talked about, was respect to our K-12 students, but not the adult school students. So you don't have to say right now, but if people could also give their opinion on that part of it, that would be helpful.
Yes, I'm complete that everyone should have the choice of testing or taking the vaccination.
Okay. Thank you, Director Vice President Brown.
Thank you. I am going to follow that train. I think Director Babbitt made some incredible points, which I will highlight in a minute. But I wanted to thank you, President Alper, for your, for the way that you opened. And I wanted to thank those who spoke tonight on both ends of the vaccination spectrum and who emailed us. And I want to just reiterate President Alper's point that although we want to encourage all of our students to be vaccinated, of course, yes, that's the bottom line, but we must be very clear that we have an obligation to serve every student. And so mandating vaccination solely is not, is not an option for us. However, having the opportunity to test weekly or have a vaccination is what's in front of us. And so if, and for anyone watching tonight or who will watch later, please make sure that part is incredibly clear to all of our community. To that point, I wanted to bring up two other things that I think is important to discuss, one around activities. And I'm trying to understand the rationale behind excluding students for activities who are not vaccinated. And I'm saying this as a fully vaccinated person from a fully vaccinated family. If we are allowing students to come onto campus as long as they are, unvaccinated students, as long as they are tested, why wouldn't that same opportunity be afforded for activities, right? If we think about Berkeley High and the thousands of students who are on campus, they're students who are vaccinated and students who will, after we pass this, be COVID-tested weekly, why shouldn't that same opportunity be afforded to them for activities? That's one point. The other one is around testing, right? So although we will have students who will be unvaccinated and need to test weekly, we also don't want to miss an opportunity to test our students who are vaccinated due to the point that COVID can still be spread between vaccinated people. And so I think we need to maybe add something in or consider, if not biweekly, month, maybe biweekly testing for our students who are vaccinated as well, in an effort to keep all of our community safe. And I just think that's something that we haven't necessarily thought about or addressed. So I wanted to add that.
Thanks, President Brown. I can, I can try to answer the first question, at least explain the rationale. And then maybe ask Dr. Stevens if you could talk about the potential. And then maybe ask Dr. Stevens, if you could talk about the potential testing of vaccinated students, which, which, which is possibly sort of just a separate thing that we may also be doing regardless of whether we pass this policy or not. But you can answer that question. Vice President Brown, I think it's a totally fair question on, 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 on why we, why the proposal doesn't have a testing option for extracurricular things like athletics and prom, for example. And, and this may or may not be persuasive to you. And Director Rastadov, please jump in when it's, when it's your turn. But the, the rationale behind it was, was keeping in mind our, our goals of, our goal of getting as many students vaccinated as possible. Using that sort of McDonald's analogy, we don't, we, we, we do have to provide an education to all kids. We, we have an obligation to do that. We don't have an obligation to provide outside of the regular school day, you know, prom, for example. And so the, the theory was the, that it's both probably more legally defensible and sort of trying, trying to balance those two goals of making sure that we provide education that we have to provide to everybody and really trying to get as many kids vaccinated as possible because that's safer for the community. Mandate where we can mandate it and leave open the, the possibility of testing where, you know, where we can't and don't want to issue a full-on mandate. So that's the distinction between the two. Whether you, you know, think that makes sense or not is, is up to you, of course.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that. And I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, we, we don't have an obligation as an, or we don't have an educational obligation to have prom, period, in general. And so, but we, but we understand and value it as a part of the educational extracurricular experience for our students. One that should not be taken away if we have the opportunity to make sure that it's safe through testing either a, a week before, the day before, the day of, if we have that opportunity to do that, we, we shouldn't take it away from a group of students who are, who are too young to make decisions for themselves about their vaccine, who some are too young to make decisions for themselves about their vac, their vaccination status. So.
Okay.
Okay. And then Superintendent Stevens.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can you mention the, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I can. So the, so far, the discussion about this policy has not taken up the question of like surveillance testing. We've sort of separate from this, been really building a very robust testing program. We now have nineteen full-time individuals devoted to testing across all of our school sites and are continuing to expand surveillance testing. Even next week, we're planning to, to expand further into grade seven and eight. And the idea there has always been to build out a K-12 testing, surveillance testing program that functions independent of the vaccination status of that particular population. And we've been encouraging all of our families, so far, all of the unvaccinated populations to participate. We'll do that once we're able to expand to include upper middle school and high school students as well.
Okay, let's hear from Director Sinai.
The last part of that is will that continue or what's our plan for that to continue, even if this is mandated by January third?
So the, the current thinking is that we would be operating that surveillance testing until it no longer seems necessary. And that'd be a function of community transmission, not of this particular policy.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, Director Sinai.
So I, I too want to express my appreciation for President Alper and, and Director Rastadov and Superintendent for, for working on this. It's a, it's a critical issue. And I guess I'm, I'm feeling very mixed about it. I am a huge advocate of getting as many and everybody vaccinated. I do not have reservations around vaccinations. I think everybody should be vaccinated. And it works. There's science, as people say, you know. And so where, where I grow in some hesitancy around school districts is similar to what I said last week or the last meeting, when we are put in the position where we have become public health experts in testing and contact tracing and now vaccinations, and we're not public health experts. School districts are not public health experts. Teachers are not public health experts. The reason there are mandated vaccines for, 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 you know, the measles, mumps and rubella and chickenpox and smallpox and polio is because public health orders have put those in place and school districts have to comply with state law. What needs to happen is the state public health officials should be doing an order for vaccination and not putting people who are not public health officials in a position of trying to figure it out district by district. And only two dist, I mean, one district has passed it. West Contra Costa postponed it last night. Oakland is voting on it tonight. So there's not like districts all over the state that are doing this. I think everybody's grappling with it. Because it really should be like everything COVID-related for the last eighteen months, public health orders, not school districts trying to figure it out. So that being said, I want everybody to be vaccinated. I, I have reservations around a mandate right now because the majority of people, when you look at the data that you just put up, Dr. Stevens, who are not vaccinated are, are students of color. And President Alper, you can say, we're going to talk to our students. We want to get to our students. It's not the students, it's their parents. Students cannot decide to be vaccinated unless their parents approve it.
I don't, well, I said, isn't it at thirteen they have, what is it, Director Rastadov?
For testing, they have consent at the age of thirteen.
For testing, not for vaccination. Okay, sorry.
For vaccination, they need the parent consent.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry to.
So education is really critical. When I was just in a meeting yesterday in Oakland with a coalition of African American community organizations. And, and they did a survey of why people aren't being vaccinated. And it has to do with peer understanding, like their friends aren't getting vaccinated, what they're hearing in social media in their communities and a fear and lack of trust in the systems. So what makes me nervous, while I, I understand the concept and I agree with it in concept, what makes me nervous is a school district where we're saying our students who are most vulnerable in COVID, both by the disease as well as by learning loss, are going to potentially be highlighted or targeted because they're not vaccinated. And they're going to have to stand in line to get tested, where everybody's going to see they're not vaccinated, while other people get to come in. And so I feel like we don't have a system. It's just like with free and reduced lunch. We broke down the lines, right? Where who pays for their lunch and who gets free lunch? How are we going to ensure that students who, for whatever reasons, we haven't quite gotten them and their families to agree to the vaccination are not going to be polarized or demonized because they're not vaccinated? So I'm not opposed to the concept. I, I think I would like, and I appreciate that you've got like this January date. But I feel like we're better served to do a really proactive, bring your friend to get vaccinated, buddy up to get vaccinated, public TikTok to get vaccinated and do a big public campaign and get vaccinations on the school site at times when parents can come to really increase access as, so that access cannot be a barrier to getting vaccinated. You know, I just, I'm not sure about a school district in a, in a community where people are coming in from all over the place, not just students, but teachers, where we're saying it's a mandate right now. So I, I'm, I'm mixed on it. I'm really mixed. The other component that I just want to identify is we don't even have our testing system totally in place. So until I'm confident that we have a robust ability to set in motion the alternative of testing, I feel like it's premature to pass a policy that's vaccinate or test, unless I can guarantee families that you will always be able to test. And you won't be in a position where you can't come to school because we couldn't get you a test. So I don't know, I don't, because the policy is not administering it. I don't know where the robust ability, and somebody said in public comment, I'm almost done. Somebody said in public comment, oh, you know, there's no shortage of tests. That's not true. And I don't know, you know, if that's changed, that suddenly there's like massive abundance of, of rapid tests. But we're at the mercy of the supply chain. And so, you know, if we're going to make a requirement, we've got to be able to follow through on it. So I'm, I'm, I'm not a no, but I've got some significant flags going up at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. And this is, since it's here for discussion, it's, it's fine not to be a yes or a no, or, or, or be somewhere in the middle because these are all great comments and, and feedback for discussion. So let me go to Director Muscarini Swan and then Director Rastadov, and then back to Director Babett.
Um, first off, I just wanted to clarify something, Director Babett. You mentioned when you were speaking that the vaccinations don't, they don't decrease transmission, which I'm just wondering, is that not what, is that not what you said?
They don't stop people from getting the COVID virus.
Like completely.
You and I, yeah, we can all be vaccinated.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that they do significantly decrease the risk of transmission. And then also, I also, I, I definitely agree with the idea that, you know, we're not public health officials. But also, we do live in a city where we have our own public health department. And I'm wondering if there's a way where we can work with our public health department to like work on this in relationship to them. Because I think A, it'll make this measure a lot more trustworthy to the larger community. The fact that we are working in collaboration with public health officials and not making this decision independently. And also just make us more informed in our decision-making process. And then lastly, I just wanted to echo the comments that many other directors have made about this process being as accessible as possible so that we don't end up where, in a situation where it's predominantly students of color who are being polarized or targeted by this and making both vaccinations as accessible as possible and also outreach to families. Like I think that if we do reach a decision around this, I think that it needs to come with targeted outreach to families, possibly in a court or in collaboration with the health department, to families, informing them about what this process means, what vaccination means, the, you know, all that kind of thing in order to make this actually like an equitable process. Yeah, that was everything.
Thank you, Director Muscarini Swan. And I, I just, on the Berkeley Public Health, the, the mayor is very supportive. The city, I think, is supportive of this, but it is true that the Berkeley Public Health Department itself has not taken an official stance on whether, you know, there should be a vaccine mandate for students. So that, that's something that could conceivably happen, but, but you're right that that hasn't.
Nor has Alameda County.
That's right.
That's correct. Matt, if I can just jump in. President Alper, we do have weekly meetings with the City of Berkeley Public Health Officers. We are, we've had this, you know, a discuss preliminary discussion with them about this draft policy. They're aware that we're having this discussion this evening. And they've also been just immensely helpful on a whole range of topics, from anything from the details of contact tracing to arranging test kit provision to previous vaccine clinics, in fact, on a number of our campuses. And those are continuing. In fact, BTEC will be having some vaccine clinics even in the next couple of weeks. So there's a, there's a strong partnership there and we'll continue to work with them. But it is true that they've not yet sort of indicated that there might be an order for school-age youth related to vaccines on its way.
Director Rastadov.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the comments from my board colleagues. And also just wanted to, you know, just reiterate that there are cities that have already restricted activities for unvaccinated populations, right? Like you can't go indoors in many places already in the Bay Area if you're not vaccinated. And so I think it's important that we think of ourselves as part of, part of that movement. And cities have been doing that kind of on their own too, right? Like the state hasn't said, hasn't, hasn't released a state mandate, but cities are taking up that initiative to be bold and to protect, to protect the population, right? I think, you know, when we think about, you know, the disproportionate impact that this could have on a certain student population, we also have to remember that the disease itself has a disproportionate impact on those populations, right? And so going, you know, sitting at that COVID-19 panel in the spring with our Latinx families. And at the time when the vaccine had first, you know, been approved for students over the age of twelve and listening, right? I really, it was hard for me because I'm, I am very pro, pro-vaccine. And so to listen to, it was heartbreaking for me to listen to families that had, you know, believed these myths about the vaccine that are untrue, right? But they truly believed them. Their fear was real. And doctors authentically engaging with them, you know, to try to bring them along in the process. And it breaks my heart that a lot of those families are still not vaccinated. And when they get the disease, what happens to them is very different because of historic lack of access to healthcare. You know, all of the, their risks and when they're out of work, it means a lot more than when, you know, a white family who's very well-to-do is out of work. And so for me, just seeing that, that there are these public health concerns that we as a district have the opportunity to bridge with our local public health department, I think it's an and statement. I think this is an opportunity for us. Look, whether, it's just the cards that we've been dealt for, for the whole pandemic, right? Like we've been making decisions about how, how far our students are sitting with, where they're coming in. We've been forced to make these public health decisions. All districts have been forced to make these public health decisions, but I think we can't shy away from our responsibility to keep our students safe, particularly our most vulnerable students, because the impact of the pandemic is much harder on their families than it is for well-to-do families. And that's just a reality. That's just well documented. Cities are already restricting activities for unvaccinated populations. And I think, you know, this follows, follows suit to what a lot of cities are already doing. And for me, I think it's, it's a time for us to really, you know, talk to public health, to be intentional about reaching out our, to our targeted populations, right? To the families that, that we want to support. And I think that the policy, the way that it's drafted, because, you know, some, some folks have criticized us for not being strong enough, right? With this testing option. I think it does strike that delicate balance. I truly believe in it. The supplies issues Director Sinai are improving a little bit. So, you know, they, they weren't as terrible as they were a couple of weeks ago. I think, you know, and if not, I know there's plenty of PCR test options. But if kids get sick anyways or out of school, no matter what, right? So this is, this is a way of preventing that, right? This actually a vaccine mandate and robust testing keeps them in school. These are the measures that will keep them in school. So I think we have the opportunity to, to do something bold with our public health department on the public health front and to have youth-led campaigns and to really, you know, by building out that long implementation date, we're giving ourselves more time than some of the draft policies that are coming out of other districts.
Yeah, because it is three months away, Director Rastadov, you know, in terms of, Drew, I think, could you, what's your name, Vice President Brown?
You don't know my name anymore. So a couple of things. First, a question. In our survey, did we, by any chance, ask questions about our families' choice for continued enrollment? If we move towards mandating vaccinations or having onsite testing? Have we considered that? We think about what enrollment will look like for our families? Will our families decide to go to some other place that's not, not mandating vaccinations? Have we, and, and we need to think about what families in our districts that, that may impact or may make the decision to not be a part of our district if we move towards vaccinations? And I think it would be important to have that data and that information additionally.
Answer that and then can I answer that? So, I mean, just to be clear, we have not done any, we haven't done a survey of, of anybody. The, I think the thinking though, in the discussions was, so I looked at the Oakland, the Oakland resolution, which is a little, actually significantly vaguer than ours, I think, is fair to say. It kind of leaves a lot of the details to staff to figure out, but it's, but it's essentially a mandate without a testing option. And there was a suggestion that maybe enrollment would drop in the district because, because of what you're saying, Vice President Brown. Our, our sense was that, that having the ability to test as, to test as an option really reduced that, that concern potentially to, to zero that, except for, I think Director Sinai is raising some really important points about a stigma attached to testing that I think we need to think about and deliberate about. I think there are, there are, all the athletes are getting tested now twice a week. And so there's a lot of people on campus who are getting tested. I think there's a way to do it, probably. It doesn't involve any stigma. But our thought was that that's not, that having to get tested, just like the athletes are having to. that having to get tested, just like the athletes are having to be tested, is really unlikely to be um, uh, something that's gonna cause them to leave the district, as opposed to saying, if you don't get this vaccine that you don't wanna get, you're literally you know, kicked out of school. You can't come to school. That's a much more drastic and to, to what Director Babett was saying earlier, that's a much more drastic um, mandate that wasn't a step that, at least in, uh, the subcommittee and Dr. Stevens was willing to take.
Thank you uh, for answering that. In terms of um, testing, Director Sinai, I really wanna appreciate what you brought up and what you said. Um, it really resonated with me and I, I appreciate you for saying that. Um which kind of speaks to my point, Director Stevens, or my question about will we continue um testing for all of our students, not just our, our unvaccinated students? And we think about getting creative um, about how to do that in terms of not having um, stigma uh, attached to it, um, and not having students stick out like a fly and milk who are unvaccinated. Um I, I, I wanted to ask about testing times and also share um, just from my own research and conversations with um, schools specifically, um, not attached to districts, who are doing um, mandated uh, testing for their students through uh, throughout the school day, like through their PE classes or health and wellness classes, depending on what type of school site it is. Um, have we considered the timing for for testing and um, the way to make it so it's not a um, isolated experience for unvaccinated students?
Um, I appreciate the question. Thanks, Director Brown. So, so, you know, I imagine probably the scenario we're talking about is um, at the point that this policy were enacted, if it's approved by the board. We would, at that point, I imagine, have a K-12 surveillance testing program going on. Um, assuming that we're sort of able to get similar participation rates to our elementary schools, we'd have about eighty to ninety percent of our students testing anyways. Uh, and then some proportion of them would be those we've identified as unvaccinated and we'd be requiring them to test. So I'm, I'm sort of envisioning from an administrative perspective that the mandated testing is taking place in the context of a larger testing program in which many, many more students are being tested on a weekly basis. Uh, we have not, however, you know, begun surveillance testing in grade seven through twelve. Um, we do have a very robust program now for the elementary schools. Uh, and we do have robust testing for our athletes who are already required to test twice per week in order to participate in their teams. So we have some examples to draw from, but we haven't yet sort of modeled out what it would look like, where testing would take place or when it would take place if this policy were passed. We, we presumably have a couple of months to think that through.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think um, the, that part specifically is important um, to note, especially when we're in the discussion phase of this. Um, because the, the point has been brought up a couple of times tonight that the city or businesses and within uh, cities have made the decision to make sure that everybody is vaccinated, but we also uh, are failing to mention that those respective businesses do not have the capacity to test like we do, right? And that's an important, important part. So thank you, Superintendent Stevens, for, for your attention to that.
I'm, I'm gonna move to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
A second.
Just because it's Mr. Rilio's birthday. Um uh, second, my Director Brown, um, Ms. Jones, can you quickly call the roll, please?
Director Muscati, yes, one?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Okay, we can't extend beyond eleven fifteen, and we do have a couple of public commenters, so um and I wanna try to summarize where I, where it seems like we're going at some point. Um, but I'll first, let me go back to Director Babett and then Director Sinai.
Uh, thank you so much and uh, thank you, Director Sinai, for your comments, because I think that's a huge point that I didn't think about uh, around mandating um, testing just for, just for some and the stigma associated with that. Um, uh, so that, that really does play a huge factor, I think, in what our overall goals are as a district when we say we wanna have inclusive welcoming communities. Um, and then I also wanted to say that it, it actually is our responsibility to make sure that um, we think about the whole child, right? And athletics and sports and their participation in clubs and extracurricular activities. That is a hundred percent a part of the educational experience of our students. And it drives academic as well as um, long-term successful um, outcomes for our students. Um, so I think it's important that they always have access to those extracurricular and um whole child activities as well in our schools. And then um, thank you for mentioning ways in which they can, uh, you know, maybe it's PE or something, but we really can also um make sure that in those classes that we are teaching things like um, not just teaching nutrition, but implementing nutrition, right? That we're really be, having robust exercise programs all the way up and down, because we know that um, those who are more physically fit also have a better chance at um, fighting the disease. And I also wanna say that, you know, we talk about this testing, but we just heard significant um significant public testimony this morning with our athletes who can't even do their conditioning and their weight training uh, because we weren't able to actually secure tests for them. Again, we're denying them a part of, you know, possible scholarship opportunities as some of them see it by them not being able to condition and adequately prepare for season time. So I just wanna be, you know, very clear that this OR testing thing, we, like, like Director Sinai and my other colleagues have said it's, it's, it's huge that we can actually do that and do it well before we implement a policy like this.
Okay, thank you. Um, Director, um, let me go to Director Muscarini Swan and then Director.
I just have a super quick comment I wanted to say in response to Director Sinai and Director Babett's concerns, just from my perspective as a student who did athletics and did testing twice a week um, all of last year. I think that there is definitely a way in which we can do testing without creating stigma around it. In my experience, at least in the high school, where I know there's not um, um, like, I heard it's called the, the whole group testing. Um, there's like long lines of students out the door. I think that it would definitely be possible to test students who are unvaccinated without it creating extra stigma. I'm not familiar with the rollout in elementary and middle schools, but I'm, I know that there is also a lot more testing going on there as well. Um, so I think that although I agree, we definitely need to do more on the testing front and creating more accessibility and just getting more tests. I think that I, I, I have confidence that we'll be able to roll that out um, specifically without creating stigma for students who are unvaccinated.
Thank you for that. Um, Director Rucani.
Great, thanks. Um, um I totally, I, I wanna echo what Director Vassidov said, because this is where I think the, the complication is, is the populations that are not vaccinated in our schools predominantly are not vaccinated, or schools are also the populations that are at higher risk. Um, and we know that through the data. Um, at the same time the issues on why some of the family members have maybe decided that they're not gonna get vaccinated um, are not necessarily solved by mandates. Um, and that's the part that I think, you know, is, is the challenge, is, is creating a mandate and incentive enough for the, the, what do you call it? The carrot and the, the stick. You know, it's not really a stick if you've got the alternative of testing. So I'm not sure how many people it's gonna motivate to get, or if you're doing, this is where I'm confused about the testing plan. If you're doing surveillance testing with everybody and nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna stand out getting tested, because everybody's getting tested, then you're, you're really not creating an incentive to get vaccinated, because you can still get tested, whereas and maybe this is a recommendation or guidance when we think about is to actually do a focus group with some of our um, our, our pediatric or our, our family care providers in the not our researchers, the folks who actually see families and talk about what it takes to get somebody from no to yes. And work with our public health partners to develop strategies to do that, because I think our goal universally is to get people vaccinated. I think we're all in agreement with that. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that that's our number one objective. So if, you know a policy, me, I need to be assured that we've got the ability to implement a policy before I pass a policy. And then if there are ways for us to inform ourselves on strategies that'll help move families in a trusted way from no to yes. You know, I'd like to be a real active partner in that. Um, so I don't know, you know, again that doesn't provide you a lot of guidance to say, come back with a second reading at the next meeting. I would you know, I'm a little nervous about coming back at the next meeting with a second reading. If we don't have some of these answers to how would we ensure the integrity of implementation
Good.
of testing, uh, I mean, if, if those answers could come really clearly, um, I think that's what we need to come back.
Okay, I, I, I hear you, Director Sinai. Um, Vice President Brown.
In addition to plan, in addition to that, um, plans for campaigns around encouraging families to, to get vaccinated. If you come back with the information around testing and around um, our, our plans for, for those campaigns that would put us in a situation where we're not putting the cart before the horse or the buggy before the horse. And I think that, that's the, that's incredibly im- important and um, will and I think it'll take us, give us an opportunity to, to look at our data from a different perspective after those things are done um, as well. And that's it.
Director Sinai, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted, I, I forgot to say this earlier, and I, I don't mean to be corrective, but it's the public health officers that said you have to show vaccination to get into restaurants. It wasn't mayor's, it wasn't the city managers, which is why the City of Berkeley is requiring vaccinations and Alameda County is not, because Public Health Officer Nick Moss has not ordered it for Alameda County. So I know we have, the cards were dealt with, Director Vassadav, you know, of making these decisions. But those decisions are being made by public health directors, not, not by city officials.
Yeah, well, this is super helpful and what, what I, I, and it, it seems to me that maybe a fair sort of you can tell me if you disagree with this, um, a fair kind of reading of where we are is that about half of us, the six of us are you know, more enthusiastic about um, a vaccine or test option. The other half of us are kind of willing to consider it, but have, but have greater skepticism about um, th- the stigma around testing, the availability of testing, the, the the um, efficacy of that plan in terms of actually getting people to get vaccinated. I mean, that you'd like to, to see more thinking around those issues um, before we bring it back, um, if we bring it back for um, for board approval. Um, is that, does that seem like a fair, quick summary of where we are? And, and the, and the board, the policy subcommittee is meeting again next week. We don't have to bring it back at the next meeting. We could bring it back at a, at a later meeting. We have given ourselves a little bit of a runway. Um, Director Vassidov.
Please don't forget the attention to um, the activities portion of it as well.
Right, and I'm hearing sort of um, some, some of us don't like that at all. Um, and um obviously, at least Director Vassadav and I um, were in favor of that, but, but it, but I hear at least Director Babett, Vice President Brown um, not in favor of that. And we don't remember anything to vote on this, so it doesn't matter exactly where everybody is, but yes, thank you, Vice President Brown. Um, Director Vassidov and then Director Sinai.
I just wanna clarify something. Yeah, I, you bring up some really important points, Director Sinai, about the role of the public health officers. But council members are also making decisions about employee vaccine mandates, right? And that's not, like, I, I think what I'm trying to say is that lots of politicians are making decisions on public health matters, right? Like employee vaccination mandates. Many city, city councils are making those decisions. And I realize it's, it's a hard decision for us to make. Um, but I do think that the districts that are passing vaccination mandates for their students are being bold and are sending a strong message. And I hear everybody's concerns around testing. And I actually asked the superintendent at the last policy subcommittee meeting to meet with our, you know, our COVID team and to let us know what the cadence would be for, you know, with the, the student, with increasing student testing at the high school level for the unvaccinated student population. So I agree with everybody um, who has brought up issues around testing. I think I wanna see the cadence and understand if we have the staffing. And I think with it, with our increased staffing capacity that, that we do, is what Superintendent had mentioned to me, Superintendent Stevens. Correct me if I'm wrong, at the last policy subcommittee meeting. Um, but I think coming back to the board with more specifics would be great. That's what I'm hearing, is the loud and clear. But I just wanna clarify that, you know, there are councils that are passing vaccination mandates for city employees and again, making these decisions. Um, and, and sometimes like without the public health officers, you know, support.
Well, we did it, we did it before the state mandated it, and then the state mandated it like the next day, but, but we did that for our employees as well.
Right, that's what, I'm totally comfortable doing it for employees. It's, it's kids who have parents, who have family members. But aside, the only other thing, um, President Alper, that I don't think was included was um, our dialogue and not just like um, our active engagement and asking our public health officer to weigh in. Not just say, oh, we'll help you, but to actually weigh in and potentially to advocate at the state level and at the county level to get our public health officers to um, try, and whether that's CSBA, the Association of Superintendents, but I think we need to, I think our, our family members need to write letters to our public health officials. And if, if what we wanna do is a mandate, then I think we need to put some um, partnership energy in with our public health officers.
Okay, I think that's a really good point, Director Sinai. I'm gonna cut us off, because we've got, if, if you're here for public comment, raise your hand now. Um, because we're about to turn to that. Um, unless Director Vassidov, did you have something? No?
No, no, let me lower my hand.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, all right, Dr. Stevens, before I turn it over to public comment, um is there anything you wanted to add or, or, okay, you feel like we've captured the discussion? Okay. Um, I really appreciate it. Thank you, all, all, all of you. Um, and then, and, and Director Muscarini Swan's really so valuable to have your perspective, and I really appreciate you, um, you, you sharing your thoughts with us. Um Okay, we're gonna do public comment now. Um, same thing as the first one, there's one minute each. Um Director, I mean, Vice President Brown, are you ready? Okay. Um, we have six people raising their hands, so we're gonna have six public comments, one minute each. We're gonna start with Dan McDon and then go to Elijah Williams. I'll just, I'm just gonna tell you, um, Elijah Williams, Tom Fairchild, Sam Gridever Kausen, and then Sarah Bowles will be the last speaker. Go ahead, Mr. McDon.
Uh, yeah, thanks for the comments tonight. I guess I wanna start by just saying, I thought the goal was student health. That's where I thought the goal was, not vaccination. Uh, new study out of UC Davis came out on uh, September eighth, indicating the risk of myocarditis, which is heart inflammation, a serious uh, side effect from vaccination, is three to six times greater of a health risk to young males than is the virus itself. So just wanted to get that on the record. Um, I also wanted to point out that uh it is wholesale, unscientific and illiberal to not recognize uh, COVID recovers as immune from the virus. There's a study out of Israel indicating that that is thirteen to twenty-seven times greater immunity than anything from vaccination. Um, and uh, you know, la- lastly, um, I know, I doubt anyone up there was a C student, but I was a C student. And I would not have come to class at all without the opportunity for athletic opportunities and other social engagements. I think you would be doing incredible disservice to our students that are on the margin by eliminating the opportunity to participate in other uh, athletics and social life that exists at school. Without that, you're gonna, uh, just gonna ruin children. I promise you, it's a disaster.
I think you missed.
Have a testing option to participate.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have Elijah Williams and then um, Tom Fairchild.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, I'm speaking on it, like, as a senior on, who's played basketball at Berkeley Eye. And I'm just uh, trying to, you know, bring attention to the fact and trying to urge you guys to um, you know, help our team be able to get back in the gym, because the last time I got to play basketball in a real season was as a sophomore. And as a sophomore, you know, I'm thinking, I wanna go to the NBA, I wanna go to college for basketball, but seeing this year, seeing the people who have been continuing to play and looking at the gap there is between us, it's just showing me that you know, we gotta put in work if we really wanna make that come true. And by not allowing us to get in the gym, it's taking that opportunity away for us to, you know, get a chance of getting that scholarship or that offer. And I'm just really here to say, like, it doesn't matter. Like, whatever you guys tell us, we gotta do to get in the gym, we're gonna do it. Like, you tell us, we can only have the gym one time. Like, if you tell us we can only have the gym one time a week, we're gonna use that gym as much time as we can get it. We're gonna, like, run it off the court. So we're just asking you guys just to send us a little bit of help, so it feels like we're being supported. And appreciate you guys for letting me talk.
Thanks for, for sticking around, um, Elijah, appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Um, Tom Fairchild.
Sorry about the delay. Um, I, I took too long the first time, so this will be real quick. I just wanted to thank all of you guys. I've been sitting here through the whole thing. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent. The, the quality of dialogue and give and take and even-mindedness, and, you know, I have my own biases, I'm, I'm aware of that, but I was leaning in different directions, just hearing the different directions. I mean, that's how stimulating your dialogue was, and it really bodes well for whatever decisions you, you guys come up with. I, I encourage you, if you get a chance, I sent my document that I was gonna try to read, please look at that. But I'm gonna stop right at that and just leave you with, with just my sincerest appreciation for, I'm not just saying it. I, I've been around politics a little bit. You guys are taking it to a good level. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. That's nice of you to say, appreciate it. Um, thank you. Um, Sam, you're next, um, and then, um, Gridever-Kausen.
Thank you. Um, I first want to just appreciate all your time. I know you spent a lot of effort today having this conversation. I want to particularly appreciate Director Rassidov's partnership and her comments reminding us that vaccines protect our most vulnerable communities. I'd also urge you to look at the LED, LAUSD's resources that are linked on their proposal, which are also linked on our letter from the Youth Commission. Um, also a reminder that our public health official in Berkeley required vaccinations for people over a thousand, or meetings with over a thousand people, that include schools. Um, you know, Berkeley High is over three and a half thousand. Obviously, it's not all in one venue, so it doesn't apply. Um, I would also urge urgency on this issue. I think the more we wait, the more students are at risk, the more community members are at risk. Um, lastly, I know another part of this conversation is how do we reach out to students? I know I have, and other youth commissioners have some ideas about what that could look like with peer-to-peer education. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Sam, and, and, and we'll definitely want to, but you're gone, but we definitely want to take advantage of, um, that offer to, to work with you, um, no matter what we do. Um, okay, uh, good, Gridever-Kausen.
Yes, hi. Thank you all so much, um, for all your work. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, um, I'm a BUSD parent, a parent of a high school student and a recent BHS grad. Um, I just want to tell a little, I strongly support, um, the mandate policy you're considering, and, and potentially even, you know, something stronger. Um, my son started at Cal just now, and little anecdote, I discovered when he was going to register that he didn't have all the vaccinations that were required. Um, COVID vaccine is required, he had that, but there is a meningococcal vaccination he did not have. I don't know why, I'm not, I'm pro-vax, it just was required, and we hadn't gotten around to it for some reason. And we, because it was required, we made it happen. I made the appointment and he got the vaccination. So sometimes that little push, that little requirement, um, along with the education and all the support, which, you know, I strongly, strongly agree with everyone who wants that. Um, sometimes that's a little push that makes a difference. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, thanks very much for sticking around, um, and for sharing with us. Let, Sarah Bowles, um, Ms. Bowles, um, you have the last comment of the night.
Hey, um, so I just wanted to point out that Director Rassidov said, on behalf of the policy committees, we'll get student COVID vaccinations. She reached out to Labor and the Youth Commission, but you guys didn't reach out to parents who ultimately make the decision about student vaccination. Um, that's a really significant problem if you don't see parents as a party to the discussion. And that really needs to change, or you're not gonna have much hope of increasing confidence amongst those parents who might be COVID vaccine-resistant. So please, when you're taking a, um, look at new policy that affects, you know, students' rights, you, you know, parent decision-making, please engage with parents. It's not that hard to take a poll, do a quiz, reach out. Um, and yeah, and just, just general suggestion, if you're gonna send out a district-wide email that invites parents to this discussion, please don't schedule it last, because it's kind of like having a dinner party where you don't put the food out for four hours. It's just kind of creates, and, you know, a further impression that you don't really want family engagement on this issue. So just encourage you to just, you know, engage in your dialogue.
Thank you so much. Um, all right, well, um, so Superintendent Rilio, you have like forty-two minutes left to celebrate your birthday, not in a school board meeting, so enjoy. Um, thank you all very much. Um, have a good night.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Take care.
Happy birthday.